All right, six o'clock. Good evening, everyone. Today's May 5th, regular regular city council meeting. Due to COVID-19 pandemic emergency, we have to handle our city council meeting much differently than we usually do due to the safety of our staff and due to the safety of public. Now I would like to ask our city manager, Mr. Hagland, brief description, explanation to the public.
Good evening. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference, video conference in compliance with the state and county stay-at-home orders as allowed by the governor's executive order N-29-20, which allows for a deviation of the teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Members of the public will see council members and city staff who are appearing via remote video or telephone connections. City council meetings will be held by teleconference or video conference only until further notice. Today's agenda states that rather than attending in person, residents can submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org. That's P-U-B-C-O-M@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting or during the council meeting as any item comes up. Any written comments that were received prior to 5:30 PM today will be read out loud during the council meeting by the city clerk on the appropriate agenda item subject to the customary five-minute time limit. We will try to check the email for additional public comments during the meeting and we are looking at ways to expand the options for public comments at future such meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagland. Call the meeting in order, please. Tina may have a role call.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Campion. Member Lampton. Mayor Sandu.
Here.
You know, let's rise for the silent prayer and flag salute, please.
Flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of active State of America and to the republic.
For which stands. With liberty and justice.
All right, next agenda item B.
This last me.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear us, Kurt?
Yeah, I can hear you. I pushed the wrong button.
There should be, yeah, there should be a red button on the video camera.
All right, any agenda approval, addition and deletion console?
In the replay statement.
Admin, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T Universal Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sapmentrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, May 8th at 9:00 AM and Saturday, May 9th at 9:00 AM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
All right, thank you. There is no presentation next.
Mayor, I wanted to pull F3. I'm sorry. I had my mute on and I was trying to say something.
Okay, F3. All right, there is no presentation. Next agenda item D, public comment.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency and social distancing guidelines, public comments may be submitted via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org and will be read out loud, subject to the customary five-minute time limitation. We have received five public comments as public comments and one public comment on a specific item. So I will read those five public comments first.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, the first one received is from Christie MacLeod. "Good evening, city council members. City councils and boards of supervisors throughout California have been voting to reopen their cities and not enforce the unconstitutional executive orders that Governor Newsom has issued. The first two weeks of the shelter-in-place lockdown were somewhat understandable because we didn't know what mortality rate this virus carried. Now that we know it is extremely low and that California has been minimally affected, we need to open back up our communities and economies. Many people's livelihoods and mental health depends on it." The second one received is Robert Porter. "I believe the shelter-in-place order issued by our governor originally was a safety issue as we had no idea just of the mortality rate of this virus. Now we know that the mortality rate is very low and we, Galt, have been relatively unaffected. With the incubation period being 14 days, we are way past the critical stages and ready to reopen our city and businesses. This lockdown is and remains unconstitutional and as our city council members, you represent us, not the governor. After all, everyone knows that he has way overstepped his authority and if our city council follows this order any further, your decisions will be remembered when we go back to polls." The next one is from Peggy Porter. "City councils and board of supervisors throughout California have been voting to reopen their cities and not enforce the unconstitutional executive orders that Governor Newsom has issued. The first two weeks of the shelter-in-place lockdown were somewhat understandable because we didn't know what mortality rate this virus carried. Now that we know it is extremely low and that California and especially Galt has been minimally affected, we need to open back up our communities, our economies. Many people's livelihoods and mental health depends on it. How many more businesses will be unable to open if they stay locked down any longer? Please hear our plea." The next one is from Kimberly Pennington. "City councils and board of supervisors throughout California have been voting to reopen their cities and not enforce the unconstitutional executive orders that Governor Newsom has issued. The first two weeks of the shelter-in-place lockdown were somewhat understandable because we didn't know what mortality rate this virus carried. Now that we know it is extremely low and that California has been minimally affected, we need to open back up our communities and economies. Many people's livelihoods and mental health depends on it." The next one is from Joe Pryor. "Dear City of Galt, why are our tennis courts at the Walnut Community Park under lock and chain? Sacramento County lifted the restriction on tennis courts last Friday. Many cities like Sacramento and Folsom have opened their tennis courts. When I asked this question to the director of Park and Rec yesterday, I was told, 'Because I can't ensure safety and they will not be opened until the shelter-in-place order has been lifted. I noticed social distancing was not being observed by attendees at the flea market this morning. Let's get our priorities straight. Open the tennis courts. The governor is opening retail stores this Friday.'" And it looks like I just got one more in under public comment. This one is from Karina Porter. "It's time to open up our small town and support our businesses. My husband and I both work in big companies where there are a ton of people and yet only two positive COVID tests within all those employees. And even that, it has been well over three weeks and it has not spread. This is blown up and I feel like we need to take in the fact that all this staying at home is very depressing and is hurting so many of our citizens. Look at the facts, not the media." And then that was it for, we have one more under a specific agenda item.
Thank you. You know, on the public comment, I certainly would like to thank you, all the public comment that came through the email. And same thing, everybody concerned, same thing, we have a concern. We want to, we would like to open the economy. We would like to open this business. This is really hurting. And we are following the direction from the governor's office and also Sacramento Health Public Department. And we certainly want to do what the best for the city. And we will do what the best we can do. Anybody want a short comment on any council member? Or I can move to the next.
Good. Mr. Sully, that's the question about the tennis courts, just so we circle back. Or Tom, maybe you can, if Mr. Sully didn't hear me. There he is.
Yeah, I can hear you. I don't know if Tom wants to answer that or I do, or if he wants me to.
You can go ahead.
So, under under the mandate, and I confirm this with the city manager, that it states that to open these spaces, they must be in conformance with social distancing requirements as defined in the order and restrictions on access and use established by government or other entity that manages such area to reduce crowding and risk of transmission of COVID. Such restrictions may include but are not limited to restricting the number of entries, closing the area to vehicular access and parking, or closure to all public access. We determine that we don't have the staffing to have on the sites to ensure that they are properly disinfected or to ensure proper social distancing.
You're talking about tennis court, though. I mean, as a tennis player myself, I wondered from the beginning why that was something that was restricted. And so it only made sense to me when I read that tennis was being allowed again. I think we should reconsider that. I don't know about disinfecting the courts, but if they're unlocked during business hours or daylight hours and then they're locked at night, I don't, I don't see a problem with policing that up anymore than we're policing up, you know, an open space that I'm looking at right now where there's people out, you know, with a couple of kids on the grass. Just my opinion, but I think I would like to see that revisited.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you. Next agenda item is F, information consent calendar. Tina, could you read all the information consent except F3?
Yes, but first, we need to do reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions and committees.
Oh, yeah, E. Sorry about that. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yes. Had a SECOG Policy and Innovation Committee meeting yesterday. And there were quite a few items on the agenda and I want to thank Public Works Director Mike Selling for kind of helping me manage through a couple of the items. One in which was the, the how the money is going to be distributed through this cycle of distribution. The SECOG in the last about 16 or 18 years has done competitive grants only on a regional basis to provide funding for, for agencies. There've been, there's been a push from some cities, one is ours, to, to do a combination of formulaic and, and, and competitive. And one of the advantages of doing it in a formula type of fashion is that we don't tie up all of our money hoping that we're going to get additional money through a competitive process. It allows us to continue to move our programs and projects forward. And then we recognize also, though, that there is a need to have a competitive And then we recognize also, though, that there is a need to have a competitive process in which agencies apply so that we can, you know, take care of the entire region. And so there was a little bit of discussion at the Policy and Innovation Committee. Both Councilmember Kozlowski from Folsom and I spoke supporting some type of percentage of formula driven dispersment. There was some opposition from another agency or another jurisdiction on the committee. This is going to continue to go through the different committees and they'll have input and then certainly back to the SECOG Board. I don't know at this point if anything will change, but I appreciate Public Works Director Selling in his activism at the staff level for SECOG. Really pushing this forward. The other issue, one of the other issues that came up was budget issues. SECOG is looking at a significant hit to their budget. Looks like at this point, they're going to anticipate using about half a million dollars in reserves this year. And that's a little bit of a conservative approach, but certainly in August, they're going to bring budget revisions back forward. And it's, August is the anticipated time. But to get the budget out, it looks like they're going to make about five hundred thousand and in budget reserves to balance the budget, so the COVID nineteen is hitting every jurisdiction and 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 so they're they're trying to stay on top of it and ensure that they do the best we can with with the money that we have. And then lastly, they, we had a conversation about vehicle miles traveled traveled and how COVID nineteen has affected the vehicle miles traveled, which is one of the main concerns that SECOG has because, you know, to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, which is a requirement of the state and to do all these transportation issues that are unfunded mandates from the state. When people aren't on the road, it really helps that case. But certainly, they recognize that not only does it, it may help that, but it certainly hurts the economy. And so we had a little bit of a discussion on teleconferencing, what SECOG could do for private and public agencies to encourage more teleconferencing and balancing that with what the local economies would be able to hold. And so one of the points that I made was that, you know, I'm a proponent of teleconferencing and have been for a long time. There were a couple of issues. One is, how do we or how do agencies and or companies look at supervision models differently and things like that? You have people that are, you know, that are my age and older that are maybe not as technological gurus as as others may be, and and so that could cause a problem. And then also the other part of it is, is what does it do to the local economy and sales tax revenue during the workday for places around these workplaces? So there's lots of discussion about that, but they're certain, they're going to bring all this to the full board next month in June, so there'll be more to it. And then lastly, on not on behalf of the city council, but on behalf of myself, as a council member here in Galt, I signed a a letter that went to the governor encouraging the governor to fund Green Means Go from a stimulus perspective and and you know, so that we can get some money to take care of the roadways right out of the the state coffers rather than, in my opinion, again, going back to the taxpayer, but so if you guys remember Green Means Go was a four hundred million dollar ask of the governor last year over a four year period through a budgeted process, not a not a tax process. And so SECOG is going back out to the legislature through the the budget process and asking for for some of that to be funded this year, so. One of the, one of the interesting things that I, that was said yesterday was there was, there's many studies that have been done, just I'm kind of going back now to telecommuting real quick. One of the studies that have been done is pre- COVID nineteen. Only about seven percent of the civilian workforce were telecommuting. And they don't have a number that 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 they believe is in effect now, but they certainly can imagine that that's much higher than it was before. And just me personally, I drive in northbound ninety-nine every day to go to work and you know, for a month there, there was no traffic. It'd take me normal on a good day would take, at six thirty in the morning, it would take me forty minutes to get to work. It was taking me fifteen minutes for a long time, so there were a lot of people, I believe, still telecommuting and a lot of state agencies are taking advantage of that as well. So whatever we can do, I think as an organization, as a city, to continue to encourage telecommuting even after the COVID nineteen, I think it'd be a good thing, keeping in mind that we want to have have folks in the buildings for customer service issues, but if there's a way to to do any telecommuting, I think that would be a good idea. So that's, that's all I have. There is a SECOG meeting, I believe, a week from Thursday, and so I'll report back out on that later.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lozano. Councilmember Campion.
Yeah, since last meeting, the South County HCP, Haptite Conservation. This is a slight agenda. They accepted their first lands for dedication. It was about a little over three hundred acres, so that was accepted by the board. They also entered into an agreement with the Van Fleck Ranch, I believe, Chris. That was for about a thousand acres for future acquisition and ultimately about three thousand, so they have acquired land for mitigation purposes. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Campion. Councilmember Lamson.
Yes, we had a air quality board meeting. And we had, sounds like a lot of what Council or Vice Mayor Lozano was talking about. We talked about the greenhouse gas plan. And we actually had a public hearing on that and City of Sacramento adopted theirs in twenty twelve. City Built Grove adopted their greenhouse plan in twenty nineteen. Their target years are twenty twenty, twenty thirty and twenty fifty. Galt is in the process, it's in development, and our target years are twenty thirty, twenty fifty. And one of the big things they talked about was by twenty fifty, they hope to no longer have natural gas in homes. For a lot of reasons, when you use your stove and you cook, you're actually releasing some gas into the ozone, because when you burn something, there's always a waste product. It's also a second pipe the contractors have to do. And because of some of the explosions they've had over in the Bay Area, it, now the safety protocols are a lot stricter on natural gas. So the contractors, of course, are all for not having to build homes with natural gas and electricity. So that is something that they're hoping to do by twenty fifty. The houses that have them now, of course, will be grandfathered in, but that was the big thing with the public hearing. And they did mention how the air quality is better. It's been getting better even before we went on the quarantine, but the quarantine has helped. So hopefully we can meet those goals that we have set. And they put the budget, they're being, of course, everyone is worried about the budget, they're continuing on with the budget process and being cautiously optimistic that we won't have to lay too many people off because of the COVID budget crisis. And then the youth commission, we still put, we put off a meeting and I found, actually found out on the city's Facebook page that we extended the application process. So if anybody knows any youth that would like to apply to serve on the youth commission next year, the application process, you can get it off the city website. We would love to have some new youth members serving. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, I had a, last week at a Sacramento County Library Authority meeting and they're pretty, pretty intense meetings, actually. There's probably, there's a Zoom meeting, of course, like this, probably over a hundred people participating and making some hard decisions right now about about that the libraries are still closed, trying to, how to figure out how to continue to pay staff or not pay. And if we do, how do we pay them with personal time off versus catastrophic funds or catastrophic leave? And so it's, it's, it's tough, you know, a lot of public comment and receiving a lot of emails. A lot of emails actually from people who work at the library and and libraries are really important to people, not only the people that work there, but to the community. I get a lot of emails since I've been serving on this, you know, pleading to reopen the libraries in some capacity. And so it's some tough decisions. So we're working on that and hopefully we can get the libraries back open soon. And that's about what I have to report on that.
Thank you. I have nothing to report, but I have a meeting next week, Sacramento Transportation Authority, and I will get back to you next meeting. Next, item F, information consent calendar. Tina, could you do the direct man? Action accept item F three?
Accept the minutes as submitted, receive and file warrants for the period ending April twenty second, two thousand twenty. Adopt a resolution ratifying the Consumers Subbasin Sustainable Groundwater Management Act or SIGMA Working Group Framework Agreement for Phases Three and Four of Groundwater Sustainability Plan Development dated January ninth, two thousand twenty. And adopt ordinance twenty twenty zero one, amending the district zoning map of the City of Galt for the Cardozo Two subdivision to rezone fifty nine point one seven acres of land identified as Assessor's Parcel Number APN one five zero zero one zero one zero seven six and zero seven seven from low density, single family residential district R one A and open space OS to maximum density, single family residential district R one C and open space.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, I would, I would like to move those items for approval.
Second.
All right, motion moved by Vice Mayor Lozano, second by Councilmember Lamson. Tina, may I have a rule call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passed by five to zero.
So next agenda, item G, schedule matter notice of public heating. There is no notice of public heating schedule matter.
I'm sorry, we need
Did we want to go back to item F three?
Thank you, Mr. Hagler. All right, F three, subject Blue Dog Distribution Rent Reduction Lease Agreement Amendment. Sean Farmer.
Thank you, Mayor. So city manager Hagler and I did speak briefly about this a couple of days ago, and I, you know, give this some additional thought and I had some concerns and some questions, so I wanted, I wanted to pull this item. And basically, just for those of the public that are not aware of what this is, the city recently acquired a building we purchased at one forty Enterprise Court, which we found was more economical for the city to purchase to house our public works facility that we've been trying to build for some, some amount of time. There's current tenants in there and one of the largest tenants is Blue Dog Distributing. They're a beverage distributor and they basically approached the city asking for rent reduction due to the shelter in place order. So, and I mean, initially, what what this, what was, is being asked of the council is to reduce rent because of a hardship that the tenant has come forward and said that they are losing a certain percentage of their business. And they're asking for a reduction in that. Of course, the city doesn't want to lose a tenant. And we want to be reasonable. And the gist of it is that there's a fifty, we're proposing a fifty percent reduction in rent for a couple of months, I think, with some discretion of the city manager to extend out further than that. They do have to provide financial information showing that they, that they need this. That they proved that they've lost revenue and also if they were to go after any state emergency funding of any sort that's out there, that that money would be reimbursed to the city. So on the skin, you know, it sounds good and fair and stuff, but I, I've had some people email me in the community, which kind of sparked some further thought on my part. And, you know, the problem I have here is that, you know, there's a lot of businesses in Galt that are, that are hurting and a lot of businesses that have been shut down completely, not just losing a percentage of their business, but losing their business entirely. You know, there's a lot of landlords that may be being asked for rent reduction. What, what I think is a little unfair is that, you know, it just happens to be a weird circumstance that the city is the landlord for this particular business. But I, I think it's a little unfair that we just forgive a certain portion of rent for a tenant when we're not doing anything for the other businesses in town. I mean, I mean, we're clearly not talking about waiving like business license fees or you know, part of the city bill to a business that's suffering or maybe a business that's completely been shut down for the last eight, six weeks. You know, we're not doing any of that stuff. So for us to give a concession just because it's our tenant seems a little bit unfair. The, I mean, any reduction we do is obviously a loss in money, which is, you know, equates to taxpayer money. So the taxpayers are the ones that are going to take the hit on this. Also too, you know, I think as we make decisions from this point forward, you know, we're in a structural deficit and that's only getting worse by the day. You know, the city can only afford to do what we can afford, so we need to be very conscious of what we're able to do. Now, again, I circle back to the fact that we don't want to lose a tenant. But here's a couple of things that jumped out at me that was, I was a little bit that I questioned, it bothered me. So it says in the staff report that on March nineteenth is when Governor Newsom issued the state of emergency shelter in place order. And that is the same day that the tenant, Blue Dog, came to Public Works asking about a rent reduction. I mean, they basically came and inquired the very day of the shelter in place. Now, you could be saying that they were preemptively anticipating a reduction in, in rent, but I mean, at that point, it was the day of, they have no idea how this was going to impact them. I did a little research on the company, you know, I, it seems that the, the reduction in business that they have seen one would probably be in the small restaurant. But there's also, they also serve grocery, they also serve some other entities, which have been doing fairly well in this, in this pandemic. So, you know, how much they've been hit by the, the pandemic, I don't know. It could be fifty percent, it could be twenty percent. I know that we're talking about reducing their rent accordingly. But I think that you know, they strike me as a business that have been around for a while. It would be surprising to me, as a business of this size, paying the amount of rent they do couldn't have the means to survive thirty days without going out of business. I mean, it clearly says that the council's alternative is to not grant any rent relief. And if so, they will probably go out of business and then will be looking for a new tenant. It seems a little extreme to me. I don't think they're going to go out of business because of thirty day of fifty percent reduction. Let's, let's just assume they, they lost fifty percent of their business. So if they lost half their business for six weeks, if that's going to credit, you know, put them out of business, I, I, you know, I'm not going to judge them on their business plan, but it just seems that that's probably not likely. Most likely, they would struggle and, and, and struggle to catch up. So again, you know, the fact that we're not helping other businesses and we're kind of, you know, it's just lucky that they happen to be the city's tenant. You know, I have, I have a tenant myself that came to me asking for, you know, what can we do? And, and, and my family has other tenants. And, and some of them have been shut down completely, like they're not operating at all. And so I sympathize and I'm a pro-business guy, I get it. And so I don't want to come And so I, I sympathize and I'm a pro-business guy. I get it. And so I don't want to come off as I'm sympathetic to small business or any business. I understand what they're going through. I'm going through the same thing with my two businesses myself. One of them's almost shut down completely, the other's operating at like half. So I get it. But I would be more likely to propose something for the council along the lines of a deferment instead of a reduction. So what I had in mind was for, let's say, so we've been in six weeks under shelter in place, they're probably just now feeling the impact of that. And they obviously didn't feel it at first, but they probably started to feel the, the repercussions of that. Say maybe for two months or three months that we reduce their rent by half. We take the half that we're reducing the rent and we defer that on to say the next six months of their rent. So if they're paying, as you see in the staff report, then basically their rent's like eleven thousand. And so reducing that by like five thousand or fifty five hundred. So if I'm just using a five thousand dollar figure, if we reduce by half for three months, fifteen thousand dollars, we break the fifteen thousand up over a six month period when they are able to get their feet back, you know, on stable ground, you know, maybe, you know, in ninety days from now. And then we break that up over six months or however much longer their lease is, and they can, you know, add a little bit once they return to business. I think that would be more fair because then we're not giving a handout to someone in the community. We're more like just making a concession, but there's no money lost to the taxpayer. The city needs that money. And I, and I don't think it's right and fair to other businesses in town that we are quick to just give away that kind of cash to a tenant just because they're ours. When, like I said, other businesses are suffer. So I'd be interested to see what the other council members have to, to say on this or what their feelings are on this matter.
Any other council member want to make a comment?
Yeah, I, I will. I, I I understand what, what you're saying, Sean. I, I, a couple of distinctions though. One, we are the landlord and therefore if the city chooses to defer that payment or waive that payment, I, I see little relationship with other businesses in the community. Other businesses in the community have different landlords and it is up to those landlords then to make that decision. And again, that's not being indifferent to the businesses in town. That's just the relationship when it comes to being a landlord and a tenant. And, and I see a very clear distinction there. I, I, I do agree that asking for the, for the reduction on the day that the shelter in place order was put seems a little odd to me. And I don't know that you, they would have felt the full ramifications unless they had some advanced knowledge that no one else had that, that, that industry or that sector of, of, of the food industry would be hit first in very different.
Kurt, your mute's on. There you go.
You start all over.
No, we, we just missed the last sentence, I think.
Okay. The, 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 the point of, of deferring it, I agree. I don't know that six months, six months is going to be sufficient. Again, it's not necessarily the city's business to get into their business and their books to know whether they're making it or not. But if we are going to defer it or waive fees, I think that the city should be able to be able to legitimize, you know, that cost or that they have suffered that loss. So to that extent, I do agree with you. I don't think six months would be sufficient. Or it depends on how long, if we're going to go a two month defer or a three month deferral to make that up at six months, I think may be a little bit difficult because no one knows what's going to happen in the next six months. Particularly in this industry, how many restaurants will actually be up and running? I mean, right now they're up, up to fifty percent capacity if they are open at all. So it's, 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 it's going to be a difficult scenario. I, I would be willing to be open to work with the property owner to, to unmaintain them as a, as a tenant and to ensure the viability in the future for their business.
Just to comment back to what you were saying is that like I said, we, we, we want, we don't want to lose a tenant, but I think it's, I seems a little bit extreme to say that we're going to go out of business unless you, you know, give us a deferment for right away. I mean, we haven't even seen, I, I'm assuming we haven't seen any financial information from them at all. You just made a comment where it's none of our business to look at theirs. Well, if they're asking for money from the city to defer rent, that's taxpayer money, which case it makes it our business.
It, it said, I said, I said, normally it is not, but if we are going to waive fees, then we need to be able to legitimize that.
Yeah. Like I said, it just, you know, I think it would be a different conversation together altogether if they were completely shut down. They have been doing no business for six weeks. But there, you know, and, and to say that they've lost a fifty percent, you know, coming from, you know, as a business owner, if I say my revenues are down fifty percent, well, as my revenues, if my, as my business declines, then I make adjustments. I, I quit buying as much product or I maybe lay off a worker or two or something like that. So my expenditures are also going to go down to a certain extent. So the actual fifty percent hard loss, you know, it could be a gross loss, but it's not a fight fifty percent of net loss. I, I, I just, I struggle, like I said, with just being quick to, to to just, they come asking and we just, you know, what I did for my tenant is I did deferment and they were happy with that. They were like, great, you know? We, we, we decided to revisit it at a certain time to see when they're able to open up. And at that point, then we work out a payment plan for them to pay back the money that we, well, we just, we waived rent. We waived rent for thirty, for, for a month, like, you know, we just.
Sean, 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 my point is. What my point is, is I think what we should do is give this back to staff, have them go back and, you know, hear from the rest of the council members. But I'm good for a deferment. I'm not necessarily good for a straight out waiver unless there is just overwhelming justification. But I think staff needs to maybe look into it a little bit more and come back with something like you just said, something that's agreeable to, to the tenant as well and something susceptible to staff and kind of meets what, what we have talked about here this evening.
Well, we don't have another meeting for a month, so it would have to be, staff would look into it. Staff comes back in a month from now and, and, and shares it with us. By that time they're a month further into rent. I think we need to sit some parameters right now. I think we need to decide on some parameters that staff can go back to with.
We have a meeting in two weeks.
Yeah, I was going to say we have a meeting. There's a second meeting.
Yeah, sorry, two weeks. So I mean, I think, but if we could, if we could come up with some parameters now, some negotiating parameters more or less to go back and, and see what we can do, but you have to remember this, this is not, this is not our money. I mean, this is not me going to my tenant with my money and saying, hey, don't worry about paying that rent. I'm going to work out with you, which I've done that. But like I said, I was able to do it in a different manner that worked, you know, because the city can't, the city can't financially afford this either. I mean, the cities in, in, in a huge.
It's what you want to, it's what you want to jeopardize, Sean. I mean, do you want the tenant to go away? I don't think.
They're going to go one month of business. You think they're going to fail in one month?
Sean, I don't know. I don't know. But what I'm saying is I think staff could go back and do a better job of negotiating.
Anybody else?
Personally would like to see, I, I, I like the idea of a deferment personally. I think Sean, you brought up a good point, you know, tagged that on at the end. I would say I, you know, it's so uncertain what six months from now is going to bring. If we, if we deferred whatever justified number or percentage of their rent for the next three months, so April, May and June as it reads in the staff report, if it's, if it's thirty, or let's say it's fifty percent, just for the sake of argument, you know, that's sixteen thousand five hundred. And, and going back to them and saying, how, how long would it take you to bring that, you know, be able to add that on to your rent payment? I don't know that six months will do it. It may. I, I just don't, I don't want to be speculative of their business and what it's going to bring. I just, I think that once businesses or restaurants and places like that start opening, I don't know that they're going to open at the volume that they were. But, you know, maybe they, maybe they will and they may be overrun with business in that timeframe. They may be able to to, Blue Dog may be able to, to pay it right away. But I think a good deferment would plan would be good as well as you know, putting some things in place, like the staff report says on justifying their, their, you know, their, their loss and, and showing where there's a a, a reduction in, in business and, and justifying that through their paperwork. Sounds like in my meeting with the city manager on the agenda item, that this company is more than willing to work with us. And again, I don't know about the timing of how they knew it, but I know a lot of people were doing a lot and that, you know, there are advocacy organizations out there, probably restaurant distributor organizations and associations that have lobbyists and, and people that research this stuff. So who knows what they knew on March nineteenth, but certainly I'm, I'm, I'm thankful that they came forward instead of just not paid their bill. So that would be my, my input is deferment and kind of look at how long it would take them and negotiate that piece of it.
I did a little research and they're a beverage company. Most of their customers are bars and restaurants, so alcohol. So we, we do know that was a hit right away, that the bars were closed. And not to speculate, but I don't think the bars are going to open up as soon as the restaurants and like Vice Mayor Lozano said, if the restaurants do open and when they open, they won't be at full capacity. So I'm not disagreeing with them that they knew right away. But I like the compromise that Councilmember Campion was talking about. So maybe we can come back with that.
My comment on this one, I thank you for all the council member. I agree with everybody and you know, all the small business, they are closed, they are really hurting. The businesses are open, they are also hurting the same thing. But they have a minimum fix, fix expense. And some of the business, they cannot afford their fix or fix expense. So on the, the one hand, we do not want to lose any money from the city. Or we are in a in a deficit, but the other thing is we also don't want to lose the tenant, you know, when the tenant lose especially in a commercial building and sometimes six month a year, you do not get the tenant. So I'm agree with the Sean Farmer, you know, we don't want to lose any money, but look at the other side too. And I'm also suggesting to the staff, if we're going to give any business any deferment or reduction, we really need to see their finesse. If they really show us there's something, they're really going to in the dark. So we should, yeah, but they, they have to show to the staff their report, what their sale watch, how they drop and what their future's been. And we can take them back, even if we give a six month deferment or reduction in rent, we really need to look at what they can happen month to month. If their business can come back, nobody know this COVID nineteen, this never happened before. So if their business come back, we should be taking off whatever we give it to them. But if their business get hurt, we should be helping them and then they can be our tenant. That's my two cents.
Want to add one more?
I'm, I'm, I, 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 I same thing with the deferment, we don't lose the money, we can get the money back but on a reduction. So I don't know how hard that business is hitting. We don't want it to lose.
Yeah, I think there's been ideas shared. I, I, like I said, I was only looking for some alternative to, to just, I didn't think it should be as black and white as reduce the rent or don't. I, I think there was some middle area that we could find. So yeah, I would like to see staff go back and, and, and figure out what we can work out and then, and kind of play it by ear. I just want to be careful to say one more thing is we don't want to make sure we don't set a precedent here because, you know, we have other tenants in this building. And if we just loosely just reduce somebody's rent, then everybody else is going to ask. I, I mean, what happens if a business comes to the city and asks if they can not pay their business license because they were shut down for two, I mean, there's all kinds of things that could happen because of this. So we got to be careful, the precedent we set here and, and, and we, we need to be sure we show the city, that, that the people that we care about them, but also too, that, that we care about the city's financial wellbeing too. And, and we can't let the snowball into, into a free for all because it stands right now. Municipalities like us don't get any funding or any, any kind of bailout money at this moment. And so we're on room. So thank you for your comments, my other council members. So I appreciate that.
So does staff have sufficient information or do you need a motion? You're on mute, Tom.
Going to have Mike Selling give a little bit of context to this because I think there, well, we clearly understand the direction and don't object to that. I'm not quite sure that conclusions that were drawn were exactly accurate. So I'll have Mike just give a little bit of context and then we'll take the direction of council.
Yeah, maybe for starters, when they first reached out, we talked about probably a deferment, like what you all are kind of indicating here so far. And that was initially, and then as this thing went on, we started to research it more, see what other, you know, landlords were doing around and researching online and hearing I think it's maybe Councilmember Lamson or who maybe was actually Vice Mayor Lozano referenced, you know, Restaurant Bar Association groups and what their predictions were. In fact, even this morning, I heard one, one such person indicate that they're looking at probably at least a year before they would be looking to get back to normal. And that's assuming things start opening up here in the next month or two. So it is going to take some time and, and there are stipulations in the amendment. I guess I would also, you know, want to make you aware of that we would be able to see their profit and loss statements that, you know, document what, where are they at? They've indicated to us in our conversations that they're probably somewhere in the, you know, down forty percent or so at, at this point in time. So, so it wouldn't just be an automatic fifty percent. So but, you know, I mean, they, they are a big tenant. The other thing that they relayed to us in, in the discussions that we've had is they had just, you know, ordered a whole bunch of product because this is getting to be the, you know, the warmer weather time of year when, when people are going out to bars and restaurants more and that kind of thing before this thing hit. So they've got, you know, I guess an excess of inventory and consequently their, you know, their reserves are down. And so when this thing hit, it kind of hit at the worst possible time for them too. So so that's just some context, you know, to, to make you aware of relative to this indication. Yes, they are one of three tenants that we have and, and, you know, and, and we would not expect that the other tenants would be seeking such, but you know, I think Councilmember Farmer makes a good point, you know, and that was something that we very much considered is we do not want to set a precedent here. And so we were very careful and very, you know, clear to that in that, that this is, you know, very special, you know, one time circumstance type of situation. So, and again, that's what all the research showed and in talking with you know, attorney also to, you know, to see what else was going on around, around the state in, in, you know, in regards to landlord and rent relief or deferrals or whatnot. So and so this was pretty consistent with what was being done throughout the state from, from all of our efforts and researching this. So so anyway, I can answer any questions if you have anything particular.
Well, if they are, if they are low in reserves because they've stocked up, then, you know, deferment, of course, sounds like it would make sense because basically give them time to offload their product. You know, if you could reach back out to them and see like, you know, kind of play it by air, you know, maybe we could, you know, start it off at a ninety day deferment and then see where we're at. And, you know, at one point, maybe we just, they're just really struggling and six months from now, they're just like, they just can't, you know, seem to stay on top of these deferment payments that we arranged and then we can maybe do some kind of forgiveness at that point if we really think we're going to lose them. But I think, I, I think, you know, if, if my daughter comes to me asking for ten dollars and because she wants to do something and I give her five and I tell her to make that work, I think it's some tough love there. I think that's kind of what we have to start with and then we kind of see if the ten dollars is needed later on.
Mike, I have a quick question. I'm reading through the staff report again. It is ninety days, right, is what was originally proposed, April, May and June. And then.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that was initially and, and, and again, that was at the time, you know, the all indications were that things would probably be back open in sixty to ninety days. And and then there was a, an additional sixty day, what they called ramp up period added, you know, obviously the light switch doesn't flip the day that the economy opens back up for farms and restaurants are allowed. So so there was a sixty day ramp up subject to the. so there was a sixty day ramp up subject to the city manager's discretion built into it as well. So it could be technically up to five months as it currently stands.
I, I like, I mean, I like that timeframe specifically for this business. And I agree that this is, this is taxpayer money, but we also have, wear a different hat here. We're, we're a, we're a landlord as well. And so, but yeah, I, I think if we go back and, and say, hey, you know, the council doesn't appear to be for total deferment, like we worked something or a total waiving of, of lease payment, but can we work out some deferment plan into the future? I, I think that would be okay. And as far as a deferment, I mean, I, you know, if the recovery is going to be up to a year, I, I, I'm not adverse to extending past a six month mark for, for repayment on a deferment up to a year at this point because
Oh, I agree with that. Yeah.
You know, I, I think it's going to be very difficult to, 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 to play catch up during that timeframe. So I mean, I, I, I would support that as well. And then maybe relook at it a year if there's still an issue.
Well, I'd suggest at this point that staff take this back and work with the tenant on to, to see if we can achieve an alternate method, a deferral method as discussed by the council and we'll bring it back to you.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, maybe just to get clarification, if we could probably build in some authority, I guess, for the city manager to extend it to a year. Is that what I'm kind of hearing or?
I think what we're possibly talking, Mike, is the deferral period and, and so there's difference between rent period, a rent reduction period limited to ninety days unless there were extraordinary circumstances, then the city manager could extend it up to another sixty. But what we're talking now is instead of rent forgiveness, because it would have all been over at that point, right? What we're talking about is a rent deferral. So the deferral period would clearly be longer than the the, the months themselves that would be deferred, which ideally wouldn't, would be no more than three. The question is, you know, in, in three months, even if it were fifty percent, remember council, it was up to fifty percent according to proof. You know, it might've been twenty-five percent or ten percent or something like that in the, the, the out months, depending on how the economy comes back. The, the idea then is to Mike is to figure out what an appropriate deferral period is.
Correct. Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that there was some consensus to, to give that authority potentially, whatever it may be. Termless.
Well, a year, I'm good with a year if that's, the rest of the council's comfortable with that.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, you're probably not.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. No, we don't need to do anything, any vote or anything on that, right?
No, we'll take it back and away we go with the rest of the agenda.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next agenda item H, the regular calendar, city manager's office. Coronavirus COVID nineteen update.
So this is the, just the regular series of council meeting updates. The city continues to monitor the COVID nineteen response with County Office of Emergency Services. All of the city's essential services are operational. That includes the police or, or water service, our sewer service and other public works functions that serve a, a type of public safety function, as well as our other city services, not specifically limited by the state and county health orders are also operational. And so we're continuing to work on ways to serve the public. Given the strictures of the, the, the health orders and the pandemic itself, we're also working to keep our staff members safe. The public can reach staff. Again, this is by way of reminder, we, we put this out a number of times, but the staff, the public can reach staff by calling the numbers listed on the nineteen page of the city's website and the city's website is www.c i dot galt dot C A dot U S. And one of the very first banners that comes up is COVID nineteen. If you click on that, you'll go straight to the COVID nineteen page. Today, the city's emergency management team discussed the current status of the state and county health orders. Those orders are informed by medical experts, including epidemiologists and other infectious disease experts. And they give the underlying authority for and rationale for particular orders. Yesterday, the governor indicated, and then he did again today, that the state will be moving into the first part of tier two of the overall program that will guide the reopening of businesses in California. And, and, and so tier two is a tier unto itself, but they then compartmentalize it into certain types of businesses can open under tier two, under the first part of tier two and certain cannot. And so they spent some time trying to explain, explain that in addition to the press conference that they held recently, giving indication or, or further explanation as to what those tiers would involve. The, the the governor also spoke today that his office, his administration will be giving guidance to the fifty-eight counties in California regarding allowing certain regional areas to move into the second part of tier two at a, an accelerated pace or essentially before other regions. Counties, but he emphasized today that counties would have to make certain certifications and issue and provide guidance before this can happen. And so what the governor really was talking about and emphasized that as we move into this tier two and perhaps some areas being ahead of others that it was all going to be based on health considerations first and foremost. And that those health considerations would also include discussion of particular guidance as to those businesses, things those businesses would have to undertake in, in conformance with the, the state and county orders. So this, it was interesting because this morning at our emergency management meeting, the emergency management team determined to reach out to Sacramento, the Sacramento County Health Officer to inquire about having the health officer provide for more flexibility here in Galt. And we of course would work with the health officer to establish any specific instruction for businesses here in Galt. And we made that inquiry this morning. We made the inquiry based on the fact that the city has only twelve reported COVID nineteen infection, infections documented. We have no reported deaths. The city is located at the southern end of Sacramento County. We're away from the more populated regions of North County and that we're nine miles north of Lodi, which is the closest populated city in San Joaquin County. We also note that San Joaquin County's infection rate is approximately one half of that of Sacramento County. And so as the governor, we, we, we'll, we'll continue to work on that. We, we did some outreach. The, we were able to get a hold of the county health officer's office. The inquiry was sent on up to the health officer herself. We have not heard back by the, the meeting time tonight. And we will continue to follow up on that. In that vein, and in that spirit, you know, the governor also spoke today about the need for local jurisdictions to do the right thing and to follow the health orders, both the state and the county officials. But highlighted again that his administration would be issuing guidance to counties to follow on this any potential accelerated approach. Neither the, the city council here nor staff have any authority to be able to countermand the, the, the health orders consistent with what the mayor said at the beginning of the meeting. And we, of course, also recognize that they make those particular orders after consultation with epidemiologists, other infectious disease professionals to come up with an overall plan for the preservation of public health. Either stop right there. I can continue on with one other aspect and then take questions at the end, whatever the council's desire is.
Could you just say again, we don't have authority to what?
No authority to do something different than what the health orders say. We, the, the, the local jurisdiction, the local city council, the local mayor, in a general law city especially, but it also applies to charter cities, don't have any authority to make any other type of decision. Or, or give even, you know, a tacit acquiescence for some other scenario to play out locally. So one of the other things that we've been looking at and been following is senior citizen meal programs. As a council, maybe where we operate a meals on wheels program for participating seniors. We have for many years, the city pays into that and operates that. We have both contribution, city contribution for meal costs as well as staffing costs for the operation of that particular program. And as a early emergency management consideration, we went through the process of considering whether or not seniors had access to meals and would be able to do that. And so as the, I've updated the council before, we've been continuing to deliver meals to, to, to seniors. We've also done some outreach to the cafe participants. So Chaboya Center operates as a cafe during the week, typically pre-COVID nineteen. And we've been doing outreach to those participants to, who are not necessarily homebound, but would come out to receive their meal at Chaboya Center to get meals to them as well. So that, we're, we're finding that our Meals on Wheels program is working as planned, but from historic program as well as from an emergency management standpoint. The, and, and so that brings me to the next point, which is that, that the governor's also talked about what he's referred to as the Great Plates Senior Meal Program. It was a, meant to be a, a, a program to provide meals to seniors and involve restaurants. It is ultimately a FEMA program and we took a look at that, that program. And one of our instant concerns with that program was having the staffing resources to operate it, both to qualify and certify participants to work through the process, the, the, the FEMA required process to do that. It's a type of situation where any jurisdiction that takes it on pays for all of that upfront. You then request a reimbursement from FEMA, they, they, they will likely provide that reimbursement fairly quickly. But it's the audit on the backend that happens that is, is also a concern because you have to have been able to operate, document appropriately all of the expenditures you've made and the reason for those expenditures, the participants that you've allowed, that sort of thing. That again, trying to, our, our concern as well as the concern of other cities in Sacramento County was having the staffing resources to, to be able to undertake that. So we began to talk with the county about that because the county was looking at operating that program itself in unincorporated county areas. We, and, and they were looking at spearheading it countywide. We talked with them about them operating the program in Galt, taking on that effort to do the, the qualification, the backend documentation and preservation of that. They would pay for it. And that our component of that would be arranging for meal delivery and taking that on. The county was very appreciative of that. They, they were, they were excited, I think, about that part of it. But we found out today that even Sacramento County is not going to work with the, the, the FEMA plan. They're looking at a plan perhaps of their own and are willing to consider us as a participant therein. So we're continuing to take a look at that and, and try to figure out if there is some synergy that we can, you know, latch on to between the county and Galt for, for that program. We also note that there's really only three other counties in California, at least. Our best information today was that there are only three other counties that participate, LA County and San Francisco County. And I, I, I can't recall the, the, the other county that's, that's participating. But we're continuing to follow that program and see if we can work something out between the county and, and the city to see if that, that type of thing makes sense. FEMA reimburses partially. So truly this is a FEMA program. They'll reimburse seventy-five percent of the cost. The county would take on part of the cost and if the city operated it, the city would be responsible for, I think, six and a half percent of the, 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 the cost itself as well. And so as we were juxtaposing that against the Meals on Wheels program and what we're, what we have, have been doing here locally since the stay at home orders were put in place. We were trying to make sure that we weren't being redundant in a particular program. But we, we, we also want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to serve any senior that needs, needs meals. We note that the requirements under the FEMA program are more, more stringent than that of the Meals on Wheels program, but nonetheless we'll continue to look at, at that, what, what the county has and what they may come up with in the coming days. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Tom.
I have a question, Tom, and it goes kind of back to the, the question earlier regarding Mr. Pryor emailing in about the tennis courts and the reopening. I, I did receive a telephone call from him late today. Received his message right before the meeting, so I haven't had a chance to call him back, but can you go over that one more time? When, when can we get those open? And is that the phase, is that the second part of phase two?
Well, so the, 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 the health orders read that you have to be able to provide, you know, provide for social distancing and sanitization of, of these facilities. And one of the things we can take a look at, if you're going to open them up. And, and so that was our initial concern. This changed on Friday. Today's Tuesday. Well, you know, we'll, 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 we'll take a, a, a look at what we can do. One of the things that we're thinking of doing is, you know, kind of a use at your own risk approach with signage or something like that. You know, if you're going to go, if you would be going in and out of the tennis court, sanitize the handle before you go in or out or, or that sort of, sort of thing. I think even with that type of sport, you're supposed to be playing with people of the same household. Because clearly the ball is touched by multiple people and, and that sort of thing, not only two on a court, well, maybe up to four on a court. But that, that again, it's just some of, yes, tennis courts are open, but you got to continue to read further and, and other things are open. You got to continue to read further in these orders for what's required to, to, to get them open. And so we were just going through the process of assessing that and seeing, you know, what can we reasonably do? And so we were just going through the process of assessing that and seeing, you know, what can we reasonably do? Um we knew early on in this process, long before the the county health officer closed uh facilities in parks, specific facilities. We knew that there was a problem that, yeah, we were going through and spraying them down and sanitizing them. That's as good as the first person that touches it after you leave.
Right.
And and so then when somebody else come and and you you know, you can't guarantee it. And so if you're uh presenting a situation in which you are, in theory, uh, you know, guaranteeing or, you know, maybe it's not even the the rise is as high of of a bar as guaranteeing, but you're giving an indication that it's somehow safe. And uh, you know, contact tracing traces it back to uh that location or a probability that it was that location where someone became infected. Uh does that raise a a liability concern for for the city? And so that led us then to uh in in this most recent um of uh statement by the county health officer, these activities, if you do this, it led us then to talk to or talk about kind of the at-your-own-risk for those particular facilities that we have that are covered by the 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 new county health order.
Yeah, I know, and I and and the reason I ask is because I know these things, the county health officer and and uh the things coming out of the Capitol are just so fluid right now or it have been really since the beginning of this, but um so I thought maybe we would take another look at it. Um I certainly don't want to open something up that's gonna risk uh the health of anybody else and and uh and and I don't care what people say. I don't think uh this COVID thing is gone. Uh we may be at a low risk, uh we may have low numbers here in Galt, but certainly people are still, you know, infected with the flu, at least flu-like symptoms. And uh and so I think it's it's important that we make make that balance. However, um you know, the more the more often that we can get people out you know, uh and 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 the quicker we can get them out and about and in re-engaged in the community, I think, the better. So um I just asked that additional question because I do plan on calling Mr. Pryor back probably tomorrow morning and and uh engage in that conversation with him. But uh so I wanted to let him know kind of a status update. But I appreciate you guys looking into it. Armando, I appreciate all you've done to help try to manage all of this uh in these recreational areas that are not locked facilities. You know, people can just walk on to wherever they want to walk on generally. And uh having ma- having to manage that's uh quite a bit, quite a challenge a bit, so thank you.
To to Tom, did I understand you that uh maybe I misunderstood. It it does it appears though by providing the the signage, uh warning signage, that that is consistent with county health or simply uh a an added protection for the city's sake?
It's more of an added protection for the city's sake. And so what we're trying to do, what we need to do is, I mean, it's the the theory is it's an added protection for the city's sake.
Okay.
You know, we we what we don't want anybody to be doing is operating under the false illusion that we're wiping down the, you know, the the facilities after every single use or every single touch. We can't do that. And and yet we think it's, you know, if we're gonna open them, we want to provide that fair warning. But if we we also have to square that with uh the county health officer.
Okay.
And so we we, you know, we're we're just working through that process to be able to do that.
Good, good. Uh and I did talk to Mr. Pryor and he had, he had questions that I could not respond to. And I think you you've uh responded to them very well tonight, explaining that there are further de- details that aren't just, you know, oh, tennis is open, so thank you.
Any other council member?
I had some comments, but did we have, did we have a public comment on this item or was it a different item?
On this item.
I would like to wait for that and then maybe I'll comment after.
Okay, we received a public comment from Rochelle Herrendine. And it says, "Good evening, members of Galt City Council. My name is Rochelle Herrendine. I am president of the Galt Chamber of Commerce. I'm writing you in regards to an agenda item H1, City Manager's COVID Update. As we all look for ways to keep the citizens of Galt safe and healthy during the COVID nineteen pandemic, we must remember that how we react today will have unintended consequences for our local businesses tomorrow. While it is admirable to take steps to protect against the health implications of the virus, it is necessary to take into account the economic implications that may be felt long after the development of a vaccine. As you know, the Galt District Chamber of Commerce represents over a hundred ninety-five businesses in the Galt community, ranging from a single attorney to larger businesses that employ nearly two hundred people. Even with state and federal assistance, many of Galt's small businesses will not be able to survive without immediate immediate steps to normal normalcy soon. Prior to the pandemic, many businesses in the community were already struggling due to the significant increase in garbage fees. The compounded effects of the city's trash agreement and the pandemic have already caused businesses to lay off staff and cut hours. And in some cases, businesses are on the verge of shutting their doors completely. The latest numbers from Sacramento County show a total of one thousand one hundred thirty-three positive COVID nineteen cases since February second, eight hundred eighty-four, which are recovered, and forty-seven deaths, all of which were patients sixty-five years or older and or had underlying health conditions and or risk factors. Sacramento County's population exceeds one point five million. Galt has confirmed twelve cases, not all of which are even Galt residents, and that number has been steady for two weeks, even with the reopening of the Galt market in the end of March. The county now has approximately twenty-six patients hospitalized, spread out over ten hospitals. Galt has not had any deaths from COVID nineteen. However, during this time, a shelter-in-place order, our deaths from suicide have significantly gone up in Galt. We have lost at least seven people to suicide. The longer business is restricted, the worse the economic fallout will be. This has the potential to destroy a small rural town like Galt. The chamber urges you to remember your commitment to the local business and your commitment to keeping Galt's economy strong. That being said, on behalf of the board and members of the Galt Chamber, we ask that you take actions to quickly reopen our local economy and local business to be part of the solution. I and the entire chamber board stand ready to work with the city to safely reopen our local economy and mitigate both the health and economic effects of this pandemic on the Galt community. Thank you for your consideration of this request and your support of local businesses. I look forward to working with you as soon as we move forward to address the needs of Galt.
All right, uh thank you for that comment uh is from the president of a chamber. Uh I totally understand what was in the whole letter. And we want to open the economy, we want to open the business. The business here in Galt is really hurting. And the other thing is, I I think you heard from the city manager, uh the mayor and the council do not have the authority to change anything uh to change over uh to the health department. Uh I was uh, you know, discussion with the city manager about the county have a different, like in S- Serra County and the Yuba County, their health department, I don't know how they they they're going to open some of the business is mentioned in tier three. So I will ask uh, you know, our city manager if we can. And I he's also already approached uh to the county health department, what we can do for our city. You know, the other city is is very safe. As you know, there's only twelve cases and no death. And if you compare at the Sacramento County, uh they have a forty-two deaths and eleven hundred cases. I'm talking about uh I I think all we all together, here in the city council staff or mayor or vice mayor, we all want to open the economy, we want to open the economy. But we have to communicate to uh the health department. And I will ask and I will also ask the city manager, what the best we can do to communicate uh uh with the governor's office, communicate uh with the health department, if we can do to op- to help to open any business. Any other council member have any comment?
Yeah, I have some comments. Uh first off, um so thanks, Paul, for your comments. And um so this letter from the chamber is not the first I've heard of this. I've been receiving emails and and business owners coming up to me on this on this subject for probably over a week now. Um and I also had a about an hour phone call with supervisor Sue Frost today, which was very interesting. And uh it was really kind of in inspiring to speak to her. Um and she's uh basically advocating heavily um on behalf of her district for to um, you know, to represent her cities and her district to basically appeal to the governor's office or the health office to, you know, try to turn over more local um, you know, more more local control at the local level, basically say, you know, you've set guidelines um and we thank you for that. So can we have our own ability to now decipher those guidelines? And because right now we're dealing with kind of a one-size-fits-all. You know, efforts to support small businesses to help ease the pain of these forced closures have been totally inadequate. Uh and let's be honest, um I mean, small businesses such as Galt, which makeup is made up of a lot of those businesses, you know, a twelve-hundred-dollar stimulus or whatever, I mean, that's that that's not gonna replace two or three months with the business. And 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 a lot of people haven't even got one. I mean, I myself own two businesses, I haven't got a nickel from anything, like stimulus, nothing, not even business loans, uh, you know, help, anything. And as a matter of fact, I've only spoken to one business in Galt that's actually got any 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 funds to help their business. Um as we know, we've read the stories that a lot of this funding has kind of went above, you know, to the bigger corporations and and not really trickle down to the lower level, which which is the people that need it most. Um, you know, in our small businesses, they don't have deep pockets, they to survive something like this. I I have, you know, my family has two tenants uh that are not even allowed to operate in a capacity at all. And uh this is an and and they've received zero money. They've been denied actually twice for any money. So it sounds good to like, let's just keep, you know, you know, let's just play the safe and keep extending things back. But but decisions that are being made right now can can have, you know, years worth of impact. And um, you know, these avocates that are appealing to me um that they either can't access assistance, a lot of them can't even get unemployment. Like I said, businesses aren't getting um, you know, money. You know, for workers uh who have, you know, a full-time paycheck, they're getting full pay from from their corporation or whatever. You know, this is, this is not a big deal. It's just like, hey, I get to stay home and get paid, no biggie. But for most people, um, you know, two, three months without able to work or earn a living or go to school or daycare or do these things i- i- is just is is crippling. And and uh, you know, instead of discussing further shutdowns, what what I think, you know, our state leaders need to be doing is talking more about common sense approaches. Um I mean, it's a one-size-fits-all and Galt is not like Sacramento, it's not like San Francisco. Um and and I'm not sitting here discounting the the anticipated threat that we saw with this virus and and the precautions that we had to make. But we can't just continue to ignore, you know, the impact that this is having to the health uh and welfare of our citizens, mental health, spiritual health. Um, you know, welfare can be defined as many different things. Uh, you know, we did two months, two months is a si- six weeks is a sacrifice. But uh we've done our part to flatten this curve and I and we, that was intended to allow hospitals to to get it, you know, a solid foothold and and and, you know, a capacity to handle a surge. And and now it's time for the government to, you know, do more than just tell people to hide. Um, it's, it's, you know, one month is a struggle, three months could be a complete disaster, especially for a city like Galt. Even our city itself, our finances, we all know here, we're gonna be dealing with some crazy budget things. And who knows what it's really gonna end up being after it's all said and done um with the city losing its money. And uh so, you know, I think, you know, what's my duty as a council member? And that duty is to the health and welfare of the citizens and the city. Health just doesn't mean health from a virus. Health means, you know, like I said, mental health. Uh, you know, there was mention of suicides. I mean, it there there's there's other deaths attributed to just the mandates that are not contributed directly to COVID. And we have to think about those. Um, you know, my 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 duty to the welfare of the city, that welfare means the welfare of an economy. It means the welfare of a family or a business owner to be able to conduct their business and make a living and put food on the table. Businesses that have not seen a single red cent that since this thing has started. It would be a different conversation if everybody was getting business assistance and money, then people wouldn't be worked up about this. But people are just, they're at their wits' end and they're being faced to close a door. And this is not a lie. This isn't like, oh, I'm gonna face, I'm gonna close my door because, you know, uh, you know, my garbage rate went high. I mean, that's a different thing. This is, this is real. This is people who haven't done business in six weeks, period. Not, oh, my business has been hurt by something, but no business. And these are mom-and-pop places. A lot of, you know, these mom-and-pop places are are um ones that support our our community heavily. They're they're ones that give money to all the events that we do in town. They're always donating to like FFA and and local high school and 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 football and all that, they do that. And now they're just hung out to dry and they have nothing. And so you know, the welfare of our economy as a city is important too. If we don't help our economy and our businesses do something, then that loss is gonna contribute to a loss of tax dollars, which ultimately will mean that we as a city can't provide services such as police department and other critical things that we, it's just gonna be a trickle-down effect and we all understand that completely. So although Tom is actually, you know, totally correct in that we don't have the authority to do anything, but what we can do, we do have the authority to work as a body, as this council of Galt, to join with other councils and appeal to our governor and ask for some flexibility and some, you know, allow low more 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 local control from from the health office to to find ways to open up some of these businesses. You know, these these mandates have been very inconsistent. We have, you know, people over Dry Creek Golf Course, you know, uh I see golf carts all over the golf course, two, two people per cart. But yet a hairstylist can't even see one client face-to-face on a one-on-one basis. It it just makes no sense. Uh I go to Home Depot the other day, three days ago in Home Depot, there must have been two hundred people and there was twenty people in the one aisle that I had to get down. But yet we can't have a husband and wife sit down in a restaurant and have a cup of coffee because that's not safe. It's just completely inconsistent. The mandates are changing all the time. And we need to appeal to our state and federal officials on behalf of our people, on behalf of our voters to try to do and put pressure as much as we can to do that. So we and we can't do it by ourselves, I know that. But we need, I'm I'm asking you, my fellow council members, start this conversation about what we can do and what we can, what can we do as as a council to appeal those people? So um that's that's what I have to say on this matter.
Uh and and if I might just interject to, you know, just to, as a quick review, that's exactly what we're uh, what what we're doing. We started that again this morning with an inquiry, you know, talking, asking uh that very question of the health officer. Uh what can we do to, you know, we laid out the case for uh that that I spoke of earlier, twelve cases in Galt, zero deaths uh attributable to that. Um, you know, what can we do to uh modify things here locally, still do that within the bounds of the law? But it wa- it's clear to us that the governor is giving some sort of uh indication to counties. Obviously, he's talking about it uh very publicly, that there can be a, you know, the the potential for uh local areas that meet certain criteria, that you didn't articulate what that certain criteria is. Uh and that if the health officer can make certain certifications, then perhaps we can expand what Phase Two means. And that uh and and perhaps that would also lead then to uh being able to uh uh more quickly get into uh into Phase Three. So we're we we're doing that. We can uh also, if if the council would like, and it can certainly be a consensus of the council at this point, uh to uh have us draft a letter uh to the uh to the governor and to the the uh the health officer um from the city council that, you know, basically advocates this very same approach. I think that it will um, you know, it's it's important to to stay within the the, you know, uh press them to allow us that uh flexibility within the bounds of what the governor is is prescribing. I think it's a, quite candidly, a fool's errand to try to do something different than that. Flexibility within the bounds of what the governor is, is prescribing. I think it's a, quite candidly, a fool's errand to try to do something different than that. But I, I think that what we do is, is go forward and, and say, look, this is what the governor's talking about. This is what he's indicated. We would like it not to be. A one size fits all program throughout the entirety of Sacramento County, but look at us differently. Look at our geographic position. Both in relation to the, the North County and to. The city of Lodi, which is again, that closest jurisdiction, large jurisdiction to us that's just further south. We're an island. We, we talk about that in a lot of respects. Galt still remains an island largely surrounded by rural, rural uses, even though we're. Clearly a municipality and an urban use, we're surrounded by rural areas. And I think that we push that. Or I recommend that, that we push that as far as we can. Like I say, we started that this morning.
Would anybody else on the council be willing to support a letter Tom described?
I, I, I would. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I would support on that. And especially there is some other city, the city of Rockland, they. They already sent same kind of letter that Tom has mentioned.
I just have a couple of comments that I just want to throw in here as we're on this topic. I, I, I would fully support that. I also think. That it would be appropriate to at least reach out to Supervisor Natoli. And maybe that's something our mayor can do on our behalf. To let him know what we're doing, kind of give him a heads up and give him the opportunity to sign on with us. Without pressure, of course, because he represents an area which takes in much more area than our, our city limits or even our. Community here. So, and then also, you know, do whatever we can do to, to maybe get the. Get the chamber to sign on to that letter as well and push that up as far as we can. I think that the, the key is, is sorry, my. Lighting's not lighting here. I think the key is, is that to get as many diversified groups. To be involved and, 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 and really push the message forward. So. That would be my suggestion. And I just wanted to make a, make mention out of it. I think. Council member Farmer, maybe you inadvertently said it, but earlier you said, we mentioned the city manager said that he couldn't do, we couldn't do anything. I've never heard him say that. I've heard him say, we don't have the authority to do anything different, but we are doing a lot of things. To try to move that pendulum to like they were doing today. And working county health office and, and you have to, and at, at least from my perspective. Words make a big difference because somebody will pull this tape up, you know, 20 years from now and say, see, I told you that Tom guy didn't. Want to do anything and, and roll that tape. So.
I, I, that's not what I meant. Thank.
I know. Because I just wanted to correct that.
The direct authority to just.
Right.
What's been mandated and that's not, clearly I agree with you, Tom. We going head to head and just blatantly just having disregard is, is not going to be. A successful strategy. But I think if we just appeal and, and, and act, you know, like we're going to be responsible to mitigate any safety concerns and work with our businesses, maybe even on a one-to-one basis. On how that business can open safely, et cetera, et cetera. That's kind of what I envision.
So I've kind of had some discussions with the chamber president and I've asked her, are you guys reaching out to the governor as a chamber group? And as the last time I talked to her, she said no. And I, I encourage the chamber, they need to reach out. I'm kind of. Don't understand why they haven't done that already, but we definitely need to work with them. We can, we can do a letter. They can do a letter. We can do a letter together. And really serve the businesses in our community, gather them together and to serve them all. And get that letter up there. And if you read. Some of the things from Supervisor Frost, we all got a letter of what she thinks and what she wants to do. A lot of the, the stuff is already there and she's got some great ideas. If we can join with her and see if Donna Toley is. Feeling that way also, that would give us a lot more power in numbers. And I, I agree, we need to petition and. Let him know and see if we can get something going.
She just did, as we were talking, I just received an email from her. She told me earlier when we were talking by phone, she was going to send me a letter. That the city of Folsom had sent to the governor and she said she would share it with us. I can send it to you, Tom. It just to look at kind of just like as a blueprint of what they said.
Yeah, the city manager of Folsom shared it with me.
Okay. Kurt, is that something you?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I support this. You know, I, I haven't seen any of these letters, so I'm, I'm not sure exactly what they state. And I haven't had a chance to talk with Sue Frost. My, my only caution is that. Whatever we do, we do in concert with public health. Only because we don't have any experts in the city of Galt to provide that guidance. And I think that will be. Extremely important. From a, from a safety point of view and from a point of view of being able to accomplish what we're trying, what the objective is here. To open safely. And I think that that'll be important.
Yeah. So like, for example, just to touch on what you said, Kurt, exactly. And so she gave me an example of. There was a fitness club, let's call it a gym in, in Folsom that was, that wanted to open. So what they did is they put together. There, what they felt was guidelines that they would follow if they were to open. Following social distancing rules and sanitation, you know, it was like keeping equipment, you know, moving equipment further apart, minimizing when people came in. All these precautions that, you know, and an outline of what they would do. And then they sent that to county health. To try to get the blessing of county health saying, would this be appropriate? So you're right, we don't have any experts here. But I think, like I said, if we were to, you know, give it, be given some flexibility from, from the higher ups. Then we can work with Sac County saying, hey, we have, you know, a hair salon or a group of them, or we have this kind of business and this is what they like to do. And maybe we can try to work with them and try to get some kind of, you know, blessing that way or something, but any attempt.
And I, I, I agree. At, at the same time, I, I think that that's an important role that the chamber could play. In terms of formulating these plans because they know the businesses better than anyone else. You know, maybe forward that to staff, have staff look at it, get some interaction, but I, I don't, I, I see. Difficulty if that job in developing these regulations falls on staff who don't work in the industry. And don't understand how the industry works. I think that's where it's important. If this is going to be successful. The chamber has got to really step up to the plate and say, okay, here's how we think, you know, hairstylists can operate. Here how we think. Restaurants or whatever it is. And, and they come up with a, a format or a. A platform that then could be further evaluated by staff and then ultimately forwarded to county health. I think that's. Maybe a, a, a good, a good possibility.
Agreed.
I think both the state and the county probably. Largely have ideas on how these varying types of businesses are going to operate and, you know, the, the types of. That are going to be made for, for their operation. And, and so to the extent that they're doing that, I think our best bet is to, you know, advocate. For the earlier application of those standards that they've developed in our community. They're, they're developing those standards in concert with epidemiologists, other infectious disease experts and. In what to do. I, I think that that's what's going to give us the most traction as opposed to. You know, seemingly leave it up to us, trust us, because I, I think that they will likely get pushed back, you know, on that. Now, I do agree that with Councilmember Lamson, all three of the above, you know, having the chamber. The chamber should be communicating with the governor's office independently. We can independently, we can together. I think that the letter, time is of the essence. And so what I would imagine is that after this meeting tonight. And perhaps a little bit tomorrow, I'm drafting up that letter. It would be pretty much consistent with, I think, what we've all talked about. We want to operate within the guidelines. We understand that there are. Accelerated guidelines that may apply, you know, to. Areas of the state that have low infection rate and, and, you know. All the rest. Please apply that to us. Please, you know, help us figure out a plan that you'll be comfortable with. So that we can start moving right away, that we aren't having to wait in, you know, additional time. So that we can help our local economy. Our local businesses. Begin to become unshuttered. And, and I think that that's likely the best bet. I'd like to be able to get that letter. You know, off to the, the, the governor and the health officer by late tomorrow. I envision writing it so in that way, but having the mayor sign it. And then, you know, get it off to them so that we can get this ball rolling quickly.
Thank you, Tom.
All the council member agree on that, right? On this point?
Yes.
Thank you. The last thing before I move to the next item. Tom, I, I'd like to thank you again about the senior player delivery program. We did talk about your explanation because I get a lot of inquiry from the seniors. So thank you for all the explanation about that program, but we can still can make a effort at that program. All right. So next and item is H2. City council committee commission board handbook. Mr. Heckland again.
So this was an item that. Councilor, excuse me, Vice Mayor Lozano had requested and we've. To come back to the council, we've assembled the requisite materials. So in your packet, one of the things that this consists of is a. Procedures manual, if you will, of sorts for the city council, how the, the, the conduct of meetings will. Will go forward, the interaction between council and the city manager. There's, there's a series of sections and it's. It's technical in nature, just in the sense for here are the policies that the council. Will adhere to. This was an item that was adopted by the city council some years ago. It's always a good idea to bring those things out. Take another look at them, see if there are things that need to be added, issues that, that, that may, may need to be. Included or addressed. And then the other item is a policy handbook for the boards, commissions and committees. Some, I guess not necessarily similar in nature, but it, but it does articulate about each of the committees and some of the particulars for. For those committees, appointments and, and such. And so this was brought back again at the request of. Vice Mayor Lozano with the concurrence of the, the council, for the council to have a discussion. And so we bring it back. In its information nature as it serves right now. Encourage the council to have any discussion about it that you would like to have and then provide any. Direction to staff that you, you might have regarding it. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor, if I could start. You're on mute, Paul. I thank you, city manager, for bringing this back. And, and thank you to the council for, for having it come in front of us. You know, we've, we in our city's time have been pretty fortunate to have really, really good volunteers and. And people that really work hard at doing their jobs as committee members and, and council members and. There have been a couple of, of items this last year and a half that have popped up that I thought, you know. We, I wonder if we have a policy for that and, and the conduct of committee members or commission members or things like that. I think we had a, I know we did, we had a public. Meeting on, on one item of a committee member that, that we had to take action on. And so. That was one thing. And then the other is just how. You know, are the council performs and, and works together. And so I wanted to kind of bring this back and. I have reviewed all the documents and, and outside of some typos. And a couple of things here and there. It was pretty much what I had envisioned was in all of the documents. I had seen it when I first come onto council, but it'd been a while. One of the things that I really was concerned about. Was again, just the conduct of, of council members and/or commission members. Either in meetings or outside of official meetings and, and what that looks like. I don't know if any of you saw, but this last week. A local Bay Area city, I believe, excused a planning commissioner for some conduct. That, that happened over social media, I believe. And so. You know, social media is, has seemed to be one of the larger issues. I think our last issue was a social media issue and. And so. The basis for all this, at least for me, is, is I believe that. Whatever, whatever tone that you set in an organization is what's going to be the expectation. And so. As I was reading through all the, all the documents. It was pretty clear that it, like Tom said, it's, it, it lays out what people do, how people do things. But it really doesn't lay out, you know, kind of the values of the, of the, of the group. So I'll use a council for an example. You know, there's nothing in there that talks about. You know, how, how the council will act with each other, how the council will act with the city manager. How, you know, how we'll address some of those. Things like coming prepared to a meeting and, and things like that. And so. My thought is, is that we, we add on just another page of agreed upon norms, if you will. And Tom and I had a conversation earlier today about this. But maybe look at the way some other organizations locally. You know, Rockland or Folsom or whatever, Lodi, what, what are their kinds of things that they do in terms of norms? And how, and how they address those. And so that's kind of my thought and, and really. If people are kind of wondering where this is coming from, it really is coming from, you know, we had the issue with the, the committee member from earlier in the year. We've had a couple of things have come to my attention and I've spoken to my colleagues about this, about. You know, information being shared that was the, made potentially confidential in nature. And, and things like that. And so I really want to, personally, I really want to make sure that we have. A great understanding of what, how we're going to act over time. And then also. Maybe put in there that we're going to revisit it as a, as a body. Whether we are the council or the planning commission or whatever on, I don't know, the first, the first meeting in December. Every year, just so that it's back out in our, in, in front of, and, and so that. People are refreshed on what the roles are and, and how people, how people are acting. So I would entertain any, I mean, like I said, nothing really jumped out at me that was. In reviewing the documents that was, was way out of whack or, or didn't make sense. I mean, it all was just pretty basic. But I really think that piece of, you know, establishing norms for the council so that, and the other committees really. And that would be up to them, but really figuring out what that looks like. So I'd be up for, for a discussion about it.
You know, the council, Vice Mayor Lozano, the only, my comment is, you know, on this booklet, you know, usually everything. He's explained what's the responsibility of the council member, what's the responsibility? Any committee member? And what's the responsibility, any commission? And you know, I'm talking about like in. Committee member, if we're putting more responsibility, something whatever is not, this is very voluntary service. So. I don't know what else, you know, we can add a city council or, or add what else we can do, you know. Something we are not doing right and we have to do it, I think.
Yeah. I, I think that it's more formalizing. The committee and council's understanding of how, how people are going to behave. You know. Organ, just in an organization in, in general, I think it's important for people to understand. Organ, just in an organization in, in general, um, I think it's important for people to understand how. You're to act and how, what, what acceptable behavior is. You know, you can go on to YouTube or any of these other, uh, crazy internet sites and see, uh, formal government meetings where people are storming out and slamming doors and. And acting in a, in a fashion that's totally unprofessional. And, and if nothing comes from that, then that's the acceptable behavior. When you have a committee member that, that, uh, says things on social media like this person down just recently in the Bay Area. If nothing were to happen with that, that would be acceptable behavior. And so I think just by establishing as the different organizations. Um, or the different committees and commissions, as well as the council, establishing what we are going to do or how we are going to behave. And taking a look at again, how other agencies, uh, locally do that, uh, probably wouldn't be a bad idea.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I just have a.
Council member?
Yeah, I just have a quick comment. Yeah, I, I, I get exactly what you're saying, Rich, and, um. But I also think too, piggybacking with that is we need to, um. You know, I think like, for example, the action that we had to take this last year with, uh, removing the, uh. The member from one of the, uh. Commissions. You know, like you said, you were just making example of something that happened in another city, and if you do nothing, then that's the expected. Well, I think that, you know, I think that the council was, uh, acted very strongly in that manner and we kind of set a precedent right there and, and, uh. To kind of say, hey, this is kind of where we're at, and this is kind of what we won't really tolerate from, from committee and commission members. So although, um, uh, I think what you got here is a good thing and I read through it and, uh, I think it's all appropriate. And any additions that you think are needed, you know, I'd be open to seeing and I'm sure they would probably be, uh. You know, welcome additions, but I also think that at the end of the day too, is how the council, uh, handles each situation. Like, for example, the way we handled the, uh, the one is going to be the real, you know, actions speak louder than words kind of thing. Where are we, where are we going to, you know, how we handle it's going to set a precedent. So I just want to throw that in there.
Yeah, and I, and I agree. I think, I think, uh, again, me personally, and I, and, and, and I believe as a group, I think we handled that last one very well, but. I even take it a step further and say, had we had these norms and, and expected behaviors put into place. Maybe that commission member wouldn't have had to have been let go, you know what I mean? Because maybe then that behavior wouldn't have happened and given us a black eye. You know, and so, uh, what I can do is, and, and I'm, I'm more than willing to hear out everyone else is I can put together a draft. Of, of what I'm speaking of and maybe bring that back, uh, or even offer to have, uh. Maybe another council member join me and, and, uh, putting that together. But I, I just think it's going to be important to set a standard. It's kind of like, you know, we're, we're, we as a council are required to. To really supervise ourselves about how we do things and, and, and by extension, then we. Are required to supervise our, the commission members and committee members. And in conduct, and I think having that. The expectations upfront should be done, uh, as best we can. And I'm just, in, in, uh, I, I just want to make sure that that's all upfront and so that people understand. What, what is acceptable behavior and what's not, and that out of ignorance, they're not, um, making poor decisions.
Yeah, I'd be open if you want to drop something up that you want to add and share with us. Sure. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, the Vice Mayor Lozano, you know, uh, that's fine. If you want to drop something, bring them over, we can discuss. But to me, you know, we might be had to have some kind of refreshment training on ethical and behavior with. Starting from the council to everybody, because in this booklet, a lot of explanation, but might be some of. Is not go through more, not we, you know, read that. But you want to some kind of refreshment training to everybody or, or something you want to bring something we can look.
Yeah, I think, I think we're required every two years to go through ethics training and, uh, and we're, we're on our second year of that. At least the three of us are, um, and we may all be on the same cycle. I don't remember, but. So yeah, that's, I mean, that's a part of it, um, but I think that, um. You know, I think more about how, how we are acting, uh, and what the expectations are more important. I think maybe it might be a little, a little more clear if I wrote something up and, and kind of outlined it that way. You know, folks that come on, uh, at any level, um, whether you're a council member or a planning commissioner or. A committee member, you, you understand what the city council expects of your conduct. And, uh, and again, not that everybody has bad conduct, uh, but when, you know, when people, you know, don't. Conduct themselves in a manner that's acceptable. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be the first time they hear it. And I guess that's, that's my point.
Alright, whatever you want to, you know, propose, just bring to the council or talk to, uh, you know, the city manager, we go from there.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to other agencies too and see, uh, what they have in line with that. Uh, again, this, our, 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 our documents are very mechanical and, you know, I mean, it's, it, it tells you exactly what happens when and. That kind of stuff, but, uh, I was more looking, uh, toward the, uh, the conduct piece of it, so.
Alright, thank you.
It'll, it'll work with the city manager on that as well.
Alright, any other comment for any council member?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I don't have, I don't have a comment on this item, but if I could just quickly go back to the previous item, because literally. I think probably less than a minute after I concluded my, uh, remarks, we got a office, a, uh. From the Sacramento County Health Officer herself and, uh. I, I just wanted, so it, what it says, I, I don't want this first. This is me talking. I don't want this to dissuade or, um, cause you to be aggrieved by, by what, um, Dr. Casiri said, but. What she was getting back to, um, uh, to the city and says, there are no exceptions for cities. But we are making our case for Sacramento to be allowed to be on an accelerated path. I am very hopeful that it will be possible. So I just wanted you, since we were just talking about it and this, this came in as, uh. Others were talking about just this last item, I wanted to go back to it and let you know about that. Uh, we'll continue to, uh, advance our case with Dr. Casiri. Because, uh, I think that probably first and foremost, it does make sense that, that the county would have to get. Permission from the state for an accelerated path. And then, uh, perhaps we can work within the context of that with Dr. Casiri as to, uh, Galt specifically. The other item that I wanted to correct, uh, is the, um. I'm not quite sure where the figure came from in the, uh, letter that we received from Rochelle Herrendine and the, um. The Chamber of Commerce, but, uh, there have not been seven suicides, uh, in Galt. Let alone seven suicides related to COVID nineteen. Um, in the, this intervening, uh, period, I had asked the, the chief to, to take a look at that and, um. There have been two suicides in Galt, uh, um, in probably the last six or eight weeks. But both of those suicides, uh, strongly suggest by the facts and circumstances surrounding them. That they had nothing to do with COVID nineteen. And, uh, without getting into the, the specifics, um, when we look at that, it's very obvious that they were not related to COVID nineteen. Were not related to underlying issues, whether the, whether it's the local economy or things like that. They were, uh, very, uh, specific set of circumstances that led to, to those tragic events. Uh, but I wanted to clearly correct for, for you as a council and for the community that, uh, there have not been seven suicides. In, in Galt as a result of COVID nineteen. And that concludes that. I just wanted to make that, uh, correction real quick.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you. Right, next agenda item. Is number, I think, H three. Uh, Community Development Department Adoption of Resolution of Intention to Form Community Facility District Number Twenty Twenty One. Community Development Director Chris Reyes.
Uh, thank you and good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, Chris Arias, Community Development Director. And as mentioned, the agenda item you have before you is the request to adopt a resolution of intention to form community facility district twenty twenty dash one. Also, as mentioned at the previous two city council meetings, a, a team of consultants and staff have been working to create this new CFD. That essentially will apply to all new development coming into the city. For new development, it will replace existing LLDs and a two thousand five dash one CFD. The goal of the new CFD is that new development will pay for its share of maintenance and service costs related to the development. And not burden existing taxpayers. The Dry Creek Oaks Senior Subdivision is the new development project, uh, used to form this district. And just to make clear again, this CFD will not apply to existing homes. It is for new development only. And so the action tonight is the first step in the process to create this new CFD. And Renal Shaw with BBK will provide the staff report presentation. After her presentation, Renal and Mike Medvee with Will Dan, along with staff, uh, will be available to answer any questions you might have. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Renal.
Good evening, Mayor Sandhu and members of the city council. Before you tonight, you will consider the adoption of a resolution of intention to form the new CFD. We've received a petition from the property owner, um, which encompasses five parcels of property. Um, known as the Dry Creek Oaks Senior Subdivision. It's located, um, south of Bozaw Road and east of Crystal Way. Next slide, please. Uh, the CFD is proposed to be formed to finance three broad categories of types of services. The first category is public safety services, so, um, police protection services, street lights. And the second broad category is maintenance of public facilities, landscape maintenance, roadway maintenance, uh, park maintenance. And the third broad category is fire protection and suppression services. The maximum special tax ranges from eight hundred and forty dollars to one thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars annually. It is subject to an escalator, so it's the greater of two percent or the, um, consumer price index. As Chris mentioned, when new developments come in, there is an ability for new developments to annex into the CFD. Uh, next slide, please. So with the resolution before you, we, it approves the boundaries of the proposed CFD, considers. The list of services to be provided and sets forth the rate and method of apportionment. And then it calls for a public hearing to occur on your meeting at, on June sixteenth. We do have a clerical correction on, um, Exhibit A of the resolution and the definition of municipal services. Um, we need to remove recreation program services and library services from the list. Next slide, please. Uh, future actions, should the city council choose to adopt the resolution of intention at this time would be to conduct the public hearing on June sixteenth. Adopt a resolution, a formation, and also a separate resolution calling for the election to occur. And then you would conduct the election of the qualified voters and adopt another resolution, which would declare. The election results. Once that occurs, the CFD will be deemed formed and you, you will, um. Adopt a ordinance which will authorize you to levy the special taxes. And that concludes the presentation. Um, both Mike and I are available for questions, to answer any questions.
Alright, any council member, one?
I have a couple of comments. Um, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Can you please clarify on the staff report, there's the table one. Has maximum special tax A, special tax B, special tax C, um, in the staff report higher up, and I'm just trying to understand this a little better. It refers to A as being for municipal services, B being for fire and C being for maintenance. So can you explain that a little bit though? Uh, they're all three going to be, I want, I mean, are we talking about A, B and C all being. Combined together and assessed to the parcel?
Mike?
Yeah, this is Mike Medvee. Since this is an administrative question, I'll take it. We really have the option to, uh, when we submit the taxes to Sacramento County. We, we can either add them all together and just call it the, by the CFD name and levy it that way, or we can separate them out. I know, um, you know, I, I prefer to do it all as one. I do have some clients that request that they all be, uh, broken out, but I don't recommend that since it makes the tax bill look bigger. But yeah, I think the, the default plan would be to add the three quantities together. You know, they might be slightly different from annexation to annexation, but it would be that amount of those three added together that would be listed. As the CFD twenty twenty dash one on their tax bill, and that's the way it would be levied.
So that, that's what I'm trying to understand. So in the example on table one, we have, uh, under A, we have five hundred and seventy-two per residential unit, two seventy-nine for B and three thirty-one. So you, you know, you're basically, you know, we're talking like over a thousand dollars. So you, are you telling me that on one parcel, that in addition to property taxes that they're already paying, that they're paying an additional thousand plus dollars just for the CFD fee?
Yes, and, uh, that is, uh, it's a pretty typical amount, um, round about a thousand dollars. I know that if you, as you move further north, um, into, say, Roseville or, uh, the Bay Area, they can get up to fifteen hundred. Uh, I've seen some even higher than that, which is probably the highest in the state. And, um, I, I, I've also seen them lower depending on what they fund. There are some that, that are just limited to the new infrastructure. Uh, so those will look more like the special tax C. But in this case, we are, uh, recognizing, uh, kind of, I guess you would call it a structural deficit. To the general fund for municipal services and remedying that with the special tax A. Special tax B goes straight to, uh, CCSD, which is the main reason that it's held on a separate line item. So that we can tell how much of that is coming in, so we can transfer it over to them. But yeah, the, the reason this one is, is bigger really is because we're, uh, we're funding three different types of, uh, services. And also bear in mind that we are, uh, replacing, uh, some other, uh, charges as well. The, uh, whatever LLDs would have been annexed to, and then also CFD two thousand five dash one. These new developments will not be required to, to go into those. So there, there is some displacement of, of other charges.
And my team did conduct a fiscal impact analysis, which analyzed, um, the deficit of services. And that is, um, the basis for the calculation of the special taxes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I all makes sense. I, I'm just, but you know, it, it sounds to me, what I'm hearing is that. And again, this is something that people are going to vote on. So I mean, you know, this is not something that we're deciding on, but. You know, I'd say to basically that you're trying to, you know, uh, make up for a structural deficit by, I mean, if I'm understanding, so basically.
Yeah. Yeah, I, so Mike used the term deficit, but the deficit isn't the budget deficit we're dealing with today.
I know that. I, I know.
Okay, okay.
I'm just saying, um, I, yeah, I, I get that. That's not what I meant. That's not what I was understanding it as, like special tax B. Like special tax B for fire services essentially, but I'm just looking at it from a perspective of just a common citizen, okay? Which I am, and I pay taxes on two houses right now. So i- if, if I was to say, okay, so I'm gonna pay two hundred and seventy-nine dollars every year on top of my taxes for fire services. So if I wanna, you know, my house catches fire and I want the fire department show up, that's what I'm paying for. But I think the layman's gonna say, well, don't I already pay taxes on that? I mean, don't my tax dollars already go for that? It, it's different. I think people look differently at something like a CFD when it's like this money is to take care of my subdivision, landscape, greenscapes, you know, the little park I have down the way, or keep the lights on, streetlights, or whatever, um, keep the roads looking nice. I think it's a little different, but when you're talking about getting into like, I'm now paying extra for fire and, and thing, I think it just, I'm, I'm worried that that's gonna come off the wrong way to uh, you know, to the voter. I, I, again, I don't know how this is gonna turn out. This is not, you know, I, this is gonna be a vote, but I, I just, it's.
So, so this will apply to all new development. And uh, that, that starts literally from scraping the ground to uh, then, you know, raising the house. Um, it won't apply to any existing development within the community. And, and so it wouldn't apply to your house or your houses. Uh, yeah. And, and so what, what, again, what this is, is this is recognition, at, at least in part, that things like the lighting landscape districts that were set up in the nineteen nineties did not adequately accommodate themselves to uh, keep pace with the, 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 the level of service. And so what we, what has happened here and what uh, Will Dan did, Mike Medve in particular, was a this fiscal impact analysis to identify the deficit that occurs, the deficit being the difference between what those homes will generate by way of property tax and sales tax and things like that, and the actual cost of providing that service. And so that's the amount of that, that, that these three add up to. Uh, one of them, of, of course, is the uh, CSD's fee for, for fire services. Um, that over the course of time, a, a CFD setup in two thousand five is gonna have a different set of fees uh, than a CFD set up in uh, two thousand twenty. Uh, just as a, you know, a, a result of uh, looking at the instant numbers versus having to try to make up all of that over the course of time from two thousand five on. So um, what we're trying to do is uh, recognize as a city that in the financial interests of the city, in the financial interests of those who live here today, have their homes here today, paid for them yesterday, and uh, and, and live and, and work here. Uh, that we have, that, that as we bring new development into the community, we want that new development to pay for itself. Not to rob existing development of the funds that are, are, are present under a different set of circumstances when those developments were constructed, but that exist today. Um, uh, because new development ends up not paying its way, not, not funding uh, it, the, that, that deficit that occurs in terms of service.
No, I, and I, and I understand all that, and I get that, you know, we've learned a lesson from the failure of the lighting and landscape districts and we're trying to correct that moving forward. And um, the, the bottom line is, i- if this passes by the voter, then, you know, it's just uh, um, any new people coming in that are gonna live in some of our newer neighborhoods that are yet to be built, you know?
Well, yeah, to, to let me clarify something else. So the CFD, the voter is the property owner. The property owner is the developer. So the developer will cast the votes. Um, and the CFD, and that was a condition of approval on the development itself. Uh, that they enter into the CFD. So at the point at which the developer then sells the house to the new homeowner, um, that CFD uh, fee or that special tax will pass to the new property owner. So this will all be enacted by, essentially by the uh, the developer.
Right, but, okay, but essentially, we're not taxing anybody that's, I mean, people, these houses aren't even built yet. These people don't even own these houses, so.
Right.
Clearly, when someone buys a house, this is all gonna be in the paperwork, that there's gonna be, you know, a fee, uh, just like if someone bought a house in a, you know, in a fluid neighborhood that had a homeowners association or something, they're, they're privy to all that, know what they're getting into.
That's right.
Yes, the city will record a notice of special tax lien against the property, so it will show up in the title report.
So I'm sure you guys have done studies on this and compared. I, well, my next question would be maybe for Chris because he's a little familiar with, with locally housing and stuff here. Or, or, you know, I'm not saying that Michael or, or um, or, um, how do you say your name? I'm sorry.
Rinald.
Rinald. I said you guys aren't uh, privy to what are, you know, local, but um, I mean, is this gonna, is this gonna deter, like, is this gonna basically make, you know, living in Galt, someone's looking for a house in Galt, they go, looking at this new house in the Dry Creek subdivision, you know, or we're looking at this place down in Elk Grove or Lodi. Is this gonna make us non-competitive in that market? Because, I mean, I'll be honest with you, if I'm looking at a house, it's gonna cost me, I don't know, five hundred thousand, let's just use that example, that price point, you know, my taxes are gonna be, you know, uh, you know, four thousand some odd dollars or five thousand, whatever. Um, you know, that's another, we're talking another twelve hundred dollars, eleven hundred and something dollars on top of that. That's, that's pretty significant. Um, are we right in the, I mean, is this what everybody's doing a recognize too?
It, it's a, hey, uh, Sean, as, as Mike mentioned, it is pretty much standard practice. I mean, if you go and look at Elk Grove, I think you'll find very similar CFDs, and in some cases, I think more, because they have a variety of special districts. I think Lodi is catching up and doing similar items, but development in general is following the same path really throughout the state, and it probably varies from location to location. But I think regionally, we're still competitive. Will it impact a buyer? Maybe. Uh, but if they go to other cities, I think they're gonna find very similar items, uh, you know, in those home sales. So I think we'll still be competitive within the market, and we're finding that the home builders and the developers, we've been talking to them, and they're not, you know, they're, they haven't uh, fought us on this, so they have not, you know, voiced any concern about the numbers that we showed. In fact, uh, Aiden uh, from True Life Companies was on the line earlier and was looking at some of the material, and it didn't shock him, and I was trading emails with him, and you know, he, from what he sees throughout the region is just very comparable.
So the home builder themselves is not, doesn't seem concerned, they're not concerned with this um, being a deterrent to sell their homes?
Uh, that has not been expressed to me, correct?
It's, Sean, can I just jump in here real quick? This, the uh, CFDs have been uh, something that uh, government agencies have been putting into place for several years. Uh, while I was on the CSD board, uh, we did them for uh, fire protection uh, in Elk Grove for probably six or seven years I was on the board. And uh, and they were bringing in large groups of uh, area that, that was undeveloped, and so um, you know, I think you're, you're, most people when they look at Galt as a, as a place to live, they're not just buying, not just buying a house here because they've, because the taxes are low, or uh, first they're buying it because it's a good place to live. And then are, uh, up until just really recently, our, our, our home prices here have been much more competitive than anywhere. Uh, and then that's where it kind of stops, I think. I think people don't really look a whole lot beyond that, and uh, and our, our, our tax base is pretty reasonable. So it is kind of the standard and, and the, those numbers that uh, that are in table one are pretty, pretty close to where we, we've been at the, we were at the consumer CSD for many years, so.
Yeah.
And I would. And Sean, I would like to add that the, the funding, you know, that this supplies or provides the city does help keep Galt, what makes Galt attractive to home buyers, which is it helps us maintain our landscape medians, especially in those districts, helps put funding toward parks, which is important to the city, and of course, police and fire services. So Galt, this type of funding will help keep Galt attractive to uh, families wanting to move here.
Yeah, no, I, I get that. And, and look, it, you know, we're, clearly, we have an issue with maintaining um, what we have with our lighting landscape, and this is the answer to fix that. And so I, I, I don't doubt any of that at all. I mean, you, it's basically, uh, you know, it's like, um, you know, somebody who buys a car, there's people that just always buy the warranty because they wanna make sure that their car is serviced regularly, things are taken care of, et cetera, et cetera, and other people are just like, I don't wanna pay any more than I have to. Um, I, I just, I'm just saying from some people's perspective, there's a lot of people out there that just say, you know, the government just wants to tax us more and more, we're paying tax for something, and now we have to pay an additional tax for what we thought we already paid a tax for, et cetera, et cetera. I, I just think of Dry Creek Oaks, and I get the whole thing. I'm just thinking Dry Creek Oaks is a retirement community. And, you know, typically, your retirement age people are the ones that are most conscious about what's my property tax is gonna be, and this and that. Those, that's the generation that seems to be the most conscious of things like that, whereas a younger is just kind of like, oh, it's just, you know, accepted. So again, but I, who am I? I don't, I'm not a home developer. I don't know anything about this. Um, if the developer says that's what we gotta do, I, as a city council member, I don't have a problem with it because I know that I don't wanna have to be trying to figure out how to keep a new area maintained when we already can't even keep what we got maintained now. So it all makes sense to me. Just trying to understand. One last question for you, Chris. I just, this, I, I was gonna ask you this before. Um, with regards to the CPI, why is it that we're always using the San Francisco Oakland Hayward CPI? Is that the closest one to us? Because I feel like that's like, you know, that is like on an area that, you know, housing prices and things like that are not, you know, comparable to us at all. Why do we always use that CPI in those areas?
Uh, you know, I defer that to Mike. I'm not real sure.
They, they discontinued the uh, Sacramento Arden Arcade. I think it was uh, CPI. They don't keep that anymore. So we always use the closest one that's available geographically.
Wow, okay. And for those that are watching CPI, Consumer Price Index, this is basically, you wanna just quick explain for the people that are watching this at home? That it's the, can you just explain what that is real fast?
Sure. So Consumer Price Index is um, uh, tallied by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, which is a government agency that tracks inflation. And um, when we set up these uh, CFDs, um, it, one of the freedoms that we have is to increase it, uh, to keep pace with inflation. Since the cost of everything that we're doing is increasing um, by uh, every year, we, we wanna keep pace, uh, make sure that the taxes keep pace with the expenditures, and that's the reason for adding a CPI uh, inflator in general. The, in the old days, you know, the LLDs, which I know that uh, Galt has a few of, they were uh, before, um, you know, before some changes, a, a lot of them did not have inflators, and it didn't seem like a problem at first, but then after twenty or thirty years, um, we have a number of clients who have those LLDs, and they only pay for a fraction of what the expenditures are. So then, when it comes to choosing a specific uh, CPI inflator, um, there are differences uh, between inflationary factors of geographies. We try to pick the closest one, and if there were one for the Sacramento area, then we would definitely use that. But in this case, um, the San Francisco CPI measurement is the closest one that we have geographically.
Yeah, and that's why I always thought that that was kind of, you know, because if you're talking about cost of living, obviously, the cost of living in those areas is the highest in the state. At least San Francisco, it is, so, but yeah, it makes sense. I understand it. So thank you for your uh, answers, uh, Michael, and and, um, and I still can't see your name.
Rinald.
Rinald, and, and Chris, thanks for those answers. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Any other council member have any comment on that or any question?
Uh, this is Kurt. I, I, I spoke with Chris uh, earlier regarding a, a, a subject matter and, and uh, because, and I, I think I mentioned this in a discussion when we first talked about the CFDs. Looking at, you have improved property, you have developed property, uh, you have, what is the other definition? Undeveloped property. But they did not have one for improved property, which basically we were talking about streets, roads, and some, some form of infrastructure. Um, going back historically, um, Chris explained some of the circumstances that we face today on some properties where we did have uh, an unimproved uh, tax. And in thinking about that whole process where, you know, you would have a a small stepped-up basis for a special tax, even though there were no homes constructed, you still have costs. But it almost appears to be de minimis, um, when you look at um, what the potential is down the road if you don't have development. And I won't get into all those details of Chris I talked about, but it does make sense leaving it just the way it is, so. Um, uh, and I did have a question under, under uh, special tax C. That, that would change probably by subdivision if that deals just with maintenance. Is that, is that correct, or how am I, am I reading that correctly?
Yes, that is correct.
Because it would be more geographic specific to that subdivision rather than a, a citywide cost. Is that correct?
That is correct. For this specific project, um, we, we had uh, Chris look at the new infrastructure that would, that would be transferred to the city uh, and what that would cost to maintain, um, based on so, some uh, standard uh, per unit uh, figures that we've been using for uh, for the other project as well. We figured out a total cost for that and then divided it by the number of units in this subdivision to arrive at that special tax C. And we would repeat that process for uh, future annexations, future projects.
Right, Kurt, you'll be comforted to know, though, that Public Works uh, did the evaluation on the, the uh, maintenance needs of the subdivisions.
Okay, okay. Uh, one other question. Is the special tax under A, is that based on the square footage of the, in, of the, of the individual for, in the case of residential units, individual residents, or, or how is that derived? I guess this is.
No, that's, that's a, that's a flat amount depending on whether it's a um, single, uh, whether it's a detached or an attached home, but it's the same amount for every home regardless of the square footage and regardless of uh, where it's located. Um, in this case, when we, we do the uh, fiscal impact reports and you know, there, there's, there's some arguments we made that larger, uh, larger homes might incur more costs, but we, we have to go with uh, what is standard practice throughout the state, which is for services taxes to um, to keep them uh, relatively level between, you know, from one land use to the other. And um, that's, it, it's, it's the way it's always been, and I, I don't think it's um, you know, creates any specific issues. I, I have seen services taxes that vary based on square footage. And um, in those cases, it's uh, generally requested by the developer as a way to maximize taxes on the property. It's, it's not really done to uh, to, to establish proportionality between the tax and the services received. It's, it's more done just to kind of squeeze every drop of juice out of the facilities tax, which oftentimes those are layered on top of the services taxes. So for a standard um, service tax, this is, this is generally the way that they're done, and we, we keep it that practice.
Okay. Cause I had seen in the past where they had also used uh, the square footage of the land as a basis. Um, at least in one case where they would, and there you would end up with different different taxes on different properties depending upon the size of the property, uh, it would say, rather than based on zoning or use, in any case. So that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
So to clarify what Kurt just said, um, that, that is very interesting. So if you have a subdivision with, say, four size houses and the lowest is sixteen hundred and the biggest one's twenty-five. So the fee for the CFD on the twenty-five hundred is the same as on the lowest. There's no, doesn't vary by square footage or price of how, not, not, not like your taxes would. It's just a fixed amount. Understanding that?
Yes.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Steve, I had the piggyback on the same as uh, Councilmember Sean and uh, Councilmember Campion. So that's been this CFD, it's no matter which part of the city, you can have the lot, right? You can have the lot in a new subdivision, his house price is maybe more than five hundred thousand, and you can have the lot in the downtown, maybe house price is a hundred and fifty. So both gonna charge almost a thousand dollar extra, right? And it's also, it can be the same special tax going on Dry Creek. And it's also, it can be the same special tax going on Dry Creek development. Is I'm right?
Well, only, only new development would be paying this. I know that there are, when, when we do studies on values, a lot of times looking at the assessed value is, is not necessarily a good measurement of what the, the market value would be. I, I suppose it is. I, since, since none of the older homes that have the lower tax bases would incur this charge, I don't think we'd run into a situation where a hundred and fifty thousand dollars assessed value would be paying a thousand dollar special tax for this CFD. But there will be price variance. You know, there, there will be more expensive homes paying the same amount as less expensive homes. And I think the main reason for that is the, the Melrose Law itself and really the law that governs special taxes like this in the, in the state, which is that it, it cannot be an ad valorem charge. And basically, it cannot be based on the home value. We're not allowed to do that. And as mentioned previously, a lot of these taxes, especially facility special taxes, are based on the square footage of the home to try and find, you know, a good way to kind of have a, something, something somewhat proportional to the value of the home to, to increase the tax for bigger homes. But in the case of services taxes, it's just generally, it, it, it's not as much a common practice. And when we prepare the fiscal impact report, which two, two of these three taxes were based on a fiscal impact report, we're trying to do it in kind of a scientific manner where it is based on really the number of people that we expect to live in the home. Because those are the people who will be receiving the services. And when we do that, we use the persons per household numbers that we get from the California Department of Finance. We don't really have any good studies or data to go off of that would tell us how many more people live in a larger home or a more expensive home versus a smaller one. And then also depending on, you know, where you're on the state, there, there's actually some, you know, I, I've, I've seen some individual city staff commenting that sometimes their smaller homes actually have more people in them than the larger ones or the same amount of people as the larger ones. But either way, we just, you know, if we're trying to make this, you know, kind of a scientific determination of how much is the deficit and who is and who is benefiting from it within the home, then we would, and, and I got a, I got a message from Mike, and that's a good point, so I'll address that later. But we, we try to confer the tax on the people living in the home. Now, there, there is the, the issue of the special tax C. So if we, if we had an infill development downtown that didn't add any new infrastructure to the city, then we would do a separate annexation, which is a bit like a separate tax zone. It would, it would go into its own little zone. And the special tax C would be zero. And that would reflect the fact that they aren't dedicating any new infrastructure or placing any new infrastructure burden on the city. So yeah, I appreciate Mike Selling for reminding me that, that that infill development will generally pay less because they're, they're adding less, less infrastructure to the city.
So is this CFD twenty twenty dash one, is this only for, because there was the map of the Dry Creek Oaks subdivision? Is this only pertaining to that? Not, not like all the subdivisions moving forward? As if another subdivision comes online, then there'll be a different CFD that will go through the same process as this?
We will annex territory into this CFD.
Okay. So this subdivision is just the initial one that it's starting with?
That's correct.
You know, the other thing I would like to clear about this CFD twenty twenty one, like if we have a CFD going equally all the city, right? And the developer is on the voter, right? Nobody else, right?
Yes.
And the other thing, developer can have no choice to vote, say yes, because this can be in the permit. So this, this is what I, whatever we can approve, it's automatically, there can be almost no vote. The, the developer, when he going to ask to the permit, he, if he can develop something, he have to say yes to the CFD.
That's, that's kind of true because we do condition tentative maps or paper lots with the condition that they have to annex or form this district. And they would not be able to get a final map without completing the conditions of approval. But I would add that they agree to those conditions of approval early on in the process. So it's not a surprise to them. But yeah, they, they essentially would not have an option other than to not agree to the conditions of approval and negotiate at an early stage. But our goal again is to ensure as we move forward with new development that we're not placing additional financial burdens on existing taxpayers. So that's, that's where we are with the.
And I, I think that's a very important point, Chris. I mean, you know, in the, the general plan is very clear where it talks about public infrastructure, talks about public services. It says very clearly that new development should pay its own way. I.e. the existing residents should not foot the tax bill for infrastructure or maintenance caused by new development. And, and, you know, whatever that methodology is, whether you're using the average number of individuals per home in order to come up with this cost after doing the fiscal impact evaluation, it is what it is. And either we accept what this is to pay for those costs or we look at the balance of the city to pay those costs when they receive no benefit. So, and I think that's, that, that should be front and center here. You know, this, you know, it's, it's going to be a cost and the, ultimately, the property owner is going to pay for it. But they're going to make that decision independent of anything else when they decide to purchase that home. So I, I think it's, it's what we need to do, and I think we need to move it forward.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, Kurt. We're just, I think, Paul, I'm just trying to understand this, you know, the kind of the, and, and just kind of flushing the information out for the public. But absolutely, you know, if someone doesn't like the fee, they just don't buy the house. I mean.
Exactly.
Pulls that.
The council member Campion, you know, I totally agree with you. The new development should be pay what they are sharing. But I'm, I'm trying to do, the public need to understand what we're trying to do and what exactly is can go. I, I, I do understand, we don't want to be any way on, on the exist, existing houses. But the reality, whoever going to buy our kids or grandkids going to buy these houses from these development, they can be expensive. I just want to make sure, you know, the public understand what we're trying to do. And I totally understand that, you know, we are insufficient, we need to be put that CFD. I'm agree with you. Any other council member have any other question? All right, moving along.
Sorry, Mayor Sandu, I did have. Can't get my mute, unmute done very fast. I just had a quick question. You know, I've heard from a couple of committee members in the last several weeks, both directly and indirectly about how is this a way that we are, the question is, is this a way that the government or the city, specifically our city, is getting around Prop, Proposition thirteen? And, and, and if, if not, how is that possible? Because the perception is from the public that this is just another way to get additional property taxes to bypass Prop thirteen and, and its restrictions.
Well, first and foremost, it's not an ad valorem tax like, well, like the property taxes calculated. So it is based on the fiscal impact analysis. You establish the deficit for the cost of public services per home in accordance with the way Mike Medve, you know, he, he walked through the, the, the standard process for, you know, calculating that. And, and so what this represents is not a way around Prop thirteen because of course, we're not adding additional property tax in the sense of an ad valorem tax. But what we are saying is that in order to build that house here, in order to serve that house here with the maintenance and the services that are required to be provided as a result of that house, here is the difference in the value between what it will generate in property tax and, and like, and what, what needs to then come in to be able to pay for those services. What we want to be able to avoid down road as this city face today, things that we have been dealing with instantly, especially over the course of the last year, having to lower levels of service because there isn't sufficient property tax and sales tax, or in the case of the market, market income to provide the services that the community has come to expect. And so when you have that occur, you, you have to figure it out. There has to be more revenue coming in from somewhere and, and that story is not going to change. But with respect to these new developments, CFDs provide a legal framework under which the deficit in the provision of services can be calculated and then applied to those properties that are going to create that deficit.
Yes.
Explanation, Tom, because, oh, I'm so sorry, Murnell, go ahead.
No problem. There is specific statutory authority that authorizes the city under the Melrose Act to form the CFD and levy these special taxes, which are different from general taxes, as Tom described.
And then I would add as well that, to, to the best of my knowledge, the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association, who, who was, you know, obviously part of the, you know, the force behind Prop thirteen. And I believe they also had a hand in the Melrose Act itself. But they are okay with the concept of voting with one's feet. That when you, when you're going to buy a property and there is a special tax on there and you choose to buy that property that you have essentially provided a hundred percent vote that, in, in favor of that, and they are generally okay with that, even though some taxpayer advocates don't like these, these services taxes. I think the, the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association is okay with that concept. The, what Prop thirteen protects is the existing homeowners, the people who are already in their homes. It places a two thirds registered voter majority on raising the taxes on them. But the, when you move into a house that already has a special tax on it, it's a form of unanimous consent for that tax.
Right. And, and the way I've explained it to people also is, you know, when you go to purchase a house, let's say in a community that has a homeowners association fee attached to it on a monthly basis. Prior to buying that, it's disclosed in the, in the sales agreement and all those things so that you know ahead of time. And some people choose to live in communities that have the, that are either gated and they're required to pay their own way in terms of maintenance of roadways and all that stuff. So I look at it very similar to that, although it's, it's not. But, but it's certainly, at, at, at a certain level, a, you know, the ability for people to make that decision ahead of time. And, and the, the most important part, and I think Mayor Sandu and Councilmember Campion said this earlier, and I want to reiterate, this is a way for existing homeowners and taxpayers to not carry the burden of new development. And, and that is so important because I think that's what, that's what Prop thirteen does protect home, current homeowners for. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Sure thing.
Thank you. Anybody have any more comment or any discussion? Do we have a motion on that agenda item?
I'd like to move that item.
Who's that?
I was on mute. I was on mute. I thought I moved it. Go ahead.
I'll second it.
Who's in second? Thank you. Okay, motion by Councilmember Campion and second by Vice Mayor Lozano. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passed to five to zero. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? I'm going to have to excuse myself from the meeting at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a safe. Okay, next agenda item is I communication. Tina, any communication?
We did have one other public comment come through during the meeting from John Lindberger. Does this Galt City Council have a plan in place to fund the city services if the shutdown continues?
Thank you. Any council member want any comment? All right, next agenda item, Jay, City Clerk's report?
Nothing.
Thank you. Comment by staff. City Manager Egland, please help me to get any comment from staff, please.
I'll do that. Chief Sockman, do you have any comment?
I do. I'll make it quick, but this, because of the COVID nineteen, there's been a number of events that are really important to law enforcement and the law enforcement community and everybody that knows some of the trials and things that have gone on, you know, in our profession. So I'm going to try to make this brief. So this past year, two thousand nineteen, we lost three police officers in our area, all by gunfire. That's Officer Davis, Officer Natalie Corona, Sacramento Police Department Officer Taro Sullivan and Eldorado County Sheriff, Brian Ishmael, all of them by gunfire. And so in the state, in California, we lost ten. And nationwide, a hundred and forty six officers in line of duty. So normally what we do is we have a Sacramento County Peace Office Memorial, which would have been on April thirtieth, but that was canceled. Every year at that event, we always honor Kevin Ton, who was shot and killed in two thousand thirteen, January fifteenth, two thousand thirteen. Among, and, and all the other officers that were killed in Sacramento County. The California Peace Office Memorial would have been yesterday. And that was canceled. The CHP Memorial was today. And that was canceled. And next, or May tenth through the sixteenth is National Police Memorial Week. And so the events at the Washington DC have also been canceled. So, you know, Galt's a great city. We have tremendous support for our law enforcement. We appreciate that in our community. But this week, or next week, the May tenth to the sixteenth is really, really important and emotional for most of the police officers, families and all the police supporters. So anyway, from me, all of you in Galt, I just want to say thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Chris Arias, do you have any comments?
No, I have none tonight. Thank you.
Clark Tyson, Finance Director?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Mike Selling?
No, nothing to report tonight. Thanks.
Armando Solis?
No, thank you.
And Amy Mendez? Amy, you're on mute if you're crying. Okay. We'll go to Kimberly Hood, our city. Okay, we'll go to, uh, Kimberly Hood, our city attorney.
Uh, I don't have anything specific. Just we're obviously trying to sort out the governor's orders and then what the county health officer is doing and it's, uh, all the counties are working on it and what the, um, regional, uh, regional options will mean. So we will be following up as soon as we get more information. Hopefully do this week.
Very good. Thank you. And then Stephanie Van Stein, our human resources director. Anything from, from you, Stephanie?
Uh, no update this evening. Thank you.
Uh huh. Okay. Mr. Mayor, I, I don't have any comments, so I think it's back to you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Vice Mayor Lozano.
No, I don't, I, I don't have any lengthy comments at all. I just wanted to mention that I appreciate the, uh, the city and, and the citizens here in the region, uh, really doing what they can to minimize the spread of this, uh, virus and, and, uh, continue what, doing what we're doing and, and, uh, be patient as law enforcement works through the issues that we're working through, uh, uh, regarding the crime that's happened recently. But, uh, everyone I think is doing a much better job than I expected. And, and that just goes to show you that we have a great little city and, and, uh, and lots of people here that, that care about our city. And, and so I'll just leave it at that and thank everybody.
Councilmember Lamson.
Oh, yeah. I, I hope as we move into stage two and three, that we will soon be able to meet as a council in the chambers, even if we're still social distancing, hopefully that will, I would like it to happen at the next meeting, but, um, we will see. And I appreciate all the citizens being on alert. If you see people out wandering when they're not supposed to be, call PD because, um, people are supposed to be home. And then, um, Tom, hopefully you guys can get ahold of the chamber president and excited that we can work together on this and individually. And the more letters to the governor, the better. And hopefully he will hear our plea and start letting the businesses and everything open up.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, I don't want to recap on anything that, um, the others had said, but I just want to remind everybody again, um, and, uh, and, uh, the chief could maybe elaborate on this, but, um, you know, still seeing some vandalism issues going on. PD have dedicated some staff specifically to get into the bottom of this. Um, I've been notified by city manager and, and, uh, on behalf of the chief that, you know, our, our night patrols are, you know, um, uh, being more, um, for lack of a word, aggressive, you know, people are out late at night, you know, on foot or whatever, suspicious to, you know, they're going to be, uh, stopped, stuff like that. So, you know, we, we're going to have to just keep upping efforts until, um, we catch the perpetrators, if it's the same people or if it's different people. I know it's frustrating for people that are watching. I get the emails. I, I see it on social media, um, but i- it's going to take a community. I keep saying this and I, I just watched a video of an incident last week and I was amazed to see how many people were out at like three AM in the morning, one kid on a scooter. I, it just blows my mind that like who's, 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 you know, where are these parents at? So I, I'm just again, want to appeal to parents, you know, know where your, your teens are at, um, because there's some stuff going on right now and I'd hate for somebody that's out and about late at night when they shouldn't have been, get caught up in some action from a homeowner because they think their car is getting vandalized or something. So please keep your kids inside, let PD do their jobs, make it easier on them. They can get this, this involved. And, um, I think that's, that's all I had. Thanks.
All right. I just want to say to thank you for all the staff working hard during this COVID nineteen pandemic. I also say to the community or the city citizen to stay safe and keep the social distancing. And I am a confidence if we all work together, we will come over all together. Thank you. If anybody have any comment, if not, then I would like to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.